This generation of your...
All right, well, keep it pointed there and make it good and just not, I understand. She really is. It is in the city, Provo City Building, or Center, to the City Council, which is just inside the main door of the building. Accident. That's usually, we just don't accept it. In the mission. Maybe a little bit of a little hurtful reaction. No, I think we just solve the problem. That's not gonna happen now. Nope, it's not. Senator Chair. I hope so. I'm very nervous because he's on the mission. Yeah. So, yeah.
Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission meeting this evening. Happy Valentine's Day. Appreciate my colleagues being here tonight, even though I'm sure they have better company they could be keeping. There are four items on the agenda, two of them are administrative, two of them are legislative. And I guess, without further ado, we appreciate Commissioner Ronan being willing to say a prayer, and Commissioner Howard being willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven would give thanks for the opportunity we have to gather together as members of this city tonight to discuss the items that we will hear. We pray that we might be civil with one another, we pray that we might listen well to each other. We pray that we might make choices, decisions, that will benefit the city, citizens as a whole. We give thanks for the many privileges that we enjoy as members of this community. We're grateful for the kindness and generosity that so many show to one another. We're grateful for the opportunities that we have to develop our talents and pursue our interests. And we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next, let's start with Commissioner Ronan, Mr. Roll Call.
Chairman Rowan, no conflicts.
Edward Jones, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Brian Smith, no conflict.
Super, thank you. So the first item on the agenda, item number one, is a proposed amendment to zoning ordinance, which would potentially change the requirement for recreational amenities in residential projects. And Mr. Wright, do you wanna cover that for us?
Thank you. So this item is an ordinance amendment that would allow for developments that happen in the downtown zone, the general downtown DT1 zone, to have currently the requirement for developments that are over five units is to have amenity space that's 10% of the gross floor area. The request is to have that number of five units modified to be 20 units so that it applies to just larger developments. This also is an ordinance that we have in some other zones. Our low density, our medium density, high density, and campus mixed-use zones have a similar requirement where the requirement there is for 20 units. And so, basically, what would, this amendment would help allow for greater flexibility for infill developments that we see a need for in our downtown on either smaller lots or lots that haven't been developed for some time, for whatever reason, to provide greater flexibility to make those more financially feasible. And so, just also with amenity space in larger developments, they, you know, providing a clubhouse or a pool or something like that, when there's enough units there to help support that and have it make sense when it's a lower amount of units, it's hard to justify the use for that space on a smaller scale. And so, staff's recommendation would be that the County, or the Planning Commission forwards a positive recommendation to the Municipal Council for the proposed amendment that's before you. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Ronan?
Can you talk with us just a little bit about the conversation that you've had about the value of infill development? I really share that value as well, I think we wanna see as much infill development as possible. Is, are there other factors besides the requirement for this kind of space that are prohibitive to infill development? I mean, is this requirement prohibitive as it stands? Are there other things that are involved in making it hard to achieve infill development?
I ask if there are other ordinances that make it difficult.
Other requirements that make, or is this kind of the most significant one? And that's why we're hearing it tonight? Or is it just happened to be the one that this particular applicant is pursuing? But there are others that might make infill development economically less feasible or attractive?
Yeah, I'm sure there are others that, with some modification, could help on infill-type properties. But this specific one has come up because of something we've seen. And for the applicant's proposed project, that's item number two, that has been seen there as a need to amend the ordinance to help allow for something like that.
The other one that's come up on several projects is just the next part of the same sentence, or 10% of the gross floor area being developed in amenity space. Several of the developers have struggled to meet that.
Any other questions for staff?
This gives applicants and the city more flexibility in managing, in developing these properties and solving a problem, seems like it's a good idea.
What typically has been provided as kind of the amenity? Is there a customary thing? Is it a workout room? Is it park space?
Yeah, we see workout rooms frequently. Sometimes it'll be a pool or a rooftop, space where barbecues or things can take place. So, yeah, those are probably more of the common ones. We see a workout room, I think, is pretty common. So there are instances where a development will be next to, say, the rec center, and, you know, there's obviously, it'd be kind of redundant to have an extra space like that so close to, you know, the rec center or other facilities like that, where you can get probably more space utilization than you would in a smaller, you know, five or six-unit development.
Because of that last sentence, only 50%, we tend to see a pretty even split between the indoor amenity space and some type of rooftop rents or outside gathering space. And usually, it's an exercise room indoors. Sometimes it's, they intentionally just give kind of a, more of a common room, someplace that's more conducive to people, to have friends and family over during holidays, things like that, that you can't really fit into a multifamily apartment, you know? More people than you can comfortably fit in your apartment.
Yeah. A quick follow-up, for the kinds of projects that we're talking about, you know, sort of the infill concept, how much of that property is already zoned? I guess where I'm getting is just to the idea that we could really scale back the requirement, but yet, on a project-to-project basis, if there's that zoning element involved, you know, maybe, say, with an 18-unit project, that there might not be a need for 10% of the floor area to be matched with some kind of amenity space, but still, case by case, you know, maybe on a project that is right next to a park or a rec center, there'd be less need. Maybe in other situations, there would be more need. But how much of the area is kind of zoned for the type of development that we'd expect to see?
Between the downtown zones and the ITOD zone, we have quite a bit already zoning in place or quite a bit more development to take place. In this case, although there's nothing in code that will require this, this developer has got a substantial green space between his buildings that can be used for gathering during months of better weather. And we put, as the staff, we put a lot of value in that landscaped area between the buildings that he was proffering. But again, there's nothing in the code that would require that, should he change his mind.
Got it. So it might just be up to the willingness of an applicant to work with the city?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
I'd like a little information on background and perhaps history. In the staff report, it's pointed out that the LDR, MDR, HDR, and CMU zones only require 20 units, but yet, the two zones in question here are five units. What is the, why was there ever a disparity between these two zones and the other four? What was the justification? And are we violating that justification by approving this?
Neither Mr. Wright nor I were here when the downtown zones were written, so I'm not sure of the rationale there was behind that benchmark. I was here and was involved in the writing of those multifamily zones, LDR, MDR, HDR. A lot of my motivation had to do with being able to afford the amenities once you've got them. If you have a five- or 10-unit building, sometimes it can be cost prohibitive for the HOA to even afford to maintain the amenity. Then the amenity isn't maintained, or there's pressure on the city to change the rules and allow it to be used some other way. And it just tends to have the potential to cause a lot of problems down the road. So, in my experience, 20 units was the absolute minimum you would have to be able to afford the maintenance on those amenities.
Well, to me, 20 seems reasonable. I was just wondering why it was ever set at five for these two zones?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we should do something without knowing the reason for such a disparity. Apparently, there's no good reason for it.
I'm sure they had a rational basis for it, I just, I'm not sure what that was.
We just don't know what it is. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant with us here tonight? Come on and maybe take five minutes or so to talk through anything you'd like to discuss?
I'm really not sure I have much more to say than what the staff has said. From my particular perspective on the project that precipitated this question, it's a fairly small project, 14 units. We do own another project about the same size. And number one, the economic issues are definitely an issue. There's a certain scale that says you have to have a certain number of units in order to provide and maintain something that works well. I'm not of a mind to provide something then let it turn into a piece of garbage. It's just not in my personality. And so, I look at this and say, well, what could we provide? And is there sufficient cash flow coming from each of the individual rental units to support it? And in this case, it really isn't. There really isn't. You need to be to a certain size, and I don't know that 20 is exactly the number, but 20 makes sense to me. The other issue, in my particular case, is that we are so close to the Provo Rec Center that this city did such a drop-dead phenomenal job of investing gazillions of dollars in that rec center. And my tenants can walk, it's roughly two, two-and-a-half blocks to the rec center. I'm pretty sure they would way prefer to go to the rec center and work out and swim and play racquetball and basketball and so forth, and stand in a room that's, you know, roughly the size of this little platform here and sweat on a treadmill. So, I don't have, it seems to me like staff has got a good handle on this. And I asked myself, that was a great question, Mr. Jones, that you asked, well, why five here and 20 everywhere else? And it makes no sense to me. It seems like it ought to be consistent. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes.
Just in general, and not necessarily in particular to your property, but these recreational rooms or recreational spaces, would they be maintained by you as a property owner? Or would they, some of them might be maintained by an HOA in the future, is that right?
I'm not very well qualified to answer that. By the way, I am not a full-time developer. The things that you see me do are kind of a hobby job for me. So I don't have a great depth of experience. In my particular case, I would say it's absolutely my responsibility to maintain something that was common amenity space, particularly inside a building, mostly because I want it to be maintained right. I don't want the thing to smell bad and look bad and have a bunch of diet Coke cans on the floor.
Okay. In some properties, would maintenance go to an HOA for these kinds of recreational spaces?
In a condominium, they could have an HOA that would be able to take care of common space like that.
Okay, so this would, sorry?
Not in an apartment building, though.
Oh, okay.
An apartment building would be owned by the owner or a management company would maintain it.
So this is exclusive to apartment buildings, not condominiums? Or does it apply to both?
I believe it applies to any type of development. If it's, so the owner would be responsible to maintain the space. And so, if the ownership is in a homeowner's association, then the homeowner's association would take care of it. If it was an apartment in the, you know, a single landlord, then they would be responsible to maintain.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the applicant?
Thank you.
Do we have any neighborhood chairs with us tonight that would like to talk to this proposal? Anybody from the public that would like to weigh in, comment? Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing then. Or do we need to formally open?
I'd recommend that you just mention this, just for the minutes.
Mr. Jones, thank you. We were given an email right before the meeting. That's provided to us by one of the neighborhood chairs, excuse me, neighborhood chair from the Carterville neighborhood, Sarah Assay, where she, I'm gonna really paraphrase here, you guys can add to this if you'd like, simply is making the case that complexes with 10 or more apartments should have recreation areas. Anybody want to add anything to that? Okay, so, that being the case, staff helped me out in terms of the public hearing. We opened it, just, public hearing's closed. Moving on then, staff discussion, I'm sorry, commission discussion on the proposal?
I'm ready to make a motion. Will you allow me to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the Municipal Council for the proposed ordinance amendment in Attachment 1, which is going out of Greg Soder's request for an amendment to Section 14.21A.160 to increase the number of residential units needed for recreational amenities from five to 20 in the general downtown DT1 zone.
You have a motion and a second? That was Commissioner Jones with the second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item number two, related, in a way, to item number one. Proposed project plan approval for a 14-year apartment building located at 55 West 400 North in the DT1 zone. Staff, do you wanna describe the project to us?
Thank you. So the applicant here is requesting to develop a 14-unit, one-bedroom, and I guess one of the units would have three bedrooms, the rest would be one-bedroom units. It'd be four stories tall, and it would be located on a site that's adjacent to the Old Chapel Development on the corner. So it'd be this infill parcel here with the building location right there. So this is 400 North that it would be fronting on. And here's the proposed development site plan with the building located here and coming out a little bit here, and then utilizing the existing parking, as well as some parking on an adjacent property. As far as the parking goes for that, on the site, there's 32 parking stalls. 23 of them are currently being used by the Old Chapel Development and an existing building located just down here in this corner of the screen there. So there's a remaining nine parking stalls that aren't being utilized that would go towards the 17 that are required for this proposed project. The eight additional stalls that would be needed would be able to, through the Planning Commission approval tonight, would be able to enter into a shared agreement, which they have been working out those details and have an agreement with the adjoining property owner here to be able to utilize the parking stalls there, since that development is a office use, which typically sees its parking demand in the daytime, and the residential use that's being proposed would see its parking demand in the nighttime. They'd be able to enter into that shared agreement to be able to satisfy that parking demand, as staff has seen. Another thing of note would be on the development itself. Our code for the downtown, the DT1 zone, requires that there's a pedestrian entrance along the street that goes into a residential unit or a commercial space or something like that, depending on the type of project. So in this case, a pedestrian entrance would be required, fronting the 400 North Street there. When this project went through design review, there was desire to do away with that door and have an archway placed out in front of the open space there to count towards that. Staff's recommendation was to keep the door and to make it look more attractive and inviting for the development. And so, staff has, so we, so on the left... So we... So on the left here, you see the applicant's original submittal. Here's that door that I'm discussing that would be fronting 400 North. Staff has gone and done a little bit of a redesign to help try to make that more of an inviting space, bringing this area to pop out and kind of enclose a little bit there to create more of a porch fill to help satisfy that requirement there in the code. Here's another elevation of the west view. So this would be, if you were in that old chapel building, you'd be looking towards this face. And here's the opposite. And then this would be the back of the property that faces the parking lot. The one unit that has three bedrooms would have utilized the parking garage here. It has an elevator that will go up to those levels. And so staff...
So the west elevation is the side that would face that green space between the buildings?
And so staff's recommendation would be that this is approved with the following conditions: that the final coordinator review committee items are addressed and receive final approval; that the joint parking agreement that I discussed is recorded at the county; that the downtown development design standards are met, including that pedestrian entrance into the residential unit facing 400 North; and that the city council approve the ordinance amendment from item one that we discussed. If the council doesn't approve that, then this project would have to find the space in there to provide that amenity space to make this project meet that ordinance if it's not approved by the council.
Mr. Wright, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, have we had parking sharing agreements in similar-type projects throughout the city? Or anywhere in the city?
Off the top of our... Off the top of my head, I don't know of any off the top of my head, but the code does have a joint-use parking allowance that...
It seems like an efficient use. I just worry about the long-term ramifications of such a thing.
Yeah, so it'd be a recorded document that both property owners enter into. It gets recorded on both properties, meaning if they sell a property, the next property owner is still bound to that document. It would run with the land for both property owners.
Thank you, Commissioner Howard. Kind of along those lines as well. I assume that because we're talking about that, there's some indication that the adjoining property owner is amenable to entering into that kind of an agreement, arrangement?
Yeah, that's correct. We've received a draft document that's been signed. It just hasn't been recorded from all the property owners in that discussion.
I think...
But in light of Mr. Howard's question, I did meet with that property owner and pointed out to him that if he goes to redevelop his property in the future, that he's going to still be bound by that agreement. And that was, that discussion I had was months ago. And since that time, the agreement's been signed and finalized. It just hasn't been recorded.
And there's a parking garage, I think, that's loosely similar designs, isn't it? As far as the shared use?
Yeah. Wells Fargo is...
Wells Fargo, yeah.
Is shared among commercial and residential users. So yes, that's true.
Any other questions for staff? The only other one that I have, the lot that this would be located on, how was that created? Was that, did it exist like it is now? If I'm even seeing it the right way? To where it kind of loops around the condominiums there or apartments? Before this was converted into the residential use? This seems like a really odd configuration of a lot. Do you know? Has it been that way for a long time?
So when that first phase was done, yeah, I wasn't involved in that. So I don't know if, when the parcels were changed, but the applicant could address that.
Okay. Please, yeah.
About six years ago, I bought what was, we call it the old chapel. It's the old Provo 4th Ward building. And it included, all the way around from there to there, it included all of this parking area. And this, as strange as it may seem, and I've never been able to figure this out, was an old tennis court. And why on earth there would be a tennis court in conjunction with an old 4th Ward building? I have no clue. But it's always been there. That land came as part of our purchase.
It's all about the love.
That's right. That's right. The, you know, the stars aligned on that day.
Thank you. Nothing else for staff gathering? Mr. Wright, thank you.
I have a question. The alleyway, who maintains ownership of that alleyway?
So currently on the alleyway, there's... It would be something, right now, it's what we call a gap parcel. It doesn't have an ownership on it. And I believe the applicant has been working towards getting that resolved to be acquired and part of this parcel for this development. So that's a process that, through the CRC review and everything, would be, make sure that gets addressed and handled appropriately.
Thanks.
Anything else for staff? Okay, great. You have anything else you'd like to share with the commission about your project?
If I may.
Please.
This is the property that we affectionately refer to as the Old Chapel. And again, I'm not a professional developer, but I think I'm a reasonably bright guy. And I think I can see an opportunity when it presents itself. And a number of years ago, I drove past that building. And there was a dang little red and white for sale sign on it. I thought, "You're kidding. That building is for sale, really?" And my brain started to spin. And now, what we did with it is, I thought, "You know what? Somebody needs to clean that thing up." It doesn't take a lot of brains to know that in Provo, Utah, you don't let 100-year-old LDS church go down to a dump truck. And it was starting to get pretty ratty. It had some graffiti and broken windows, et cetera. So we bought the building with the intent to clean it up and to put some very, very high-end, single apartments, single-bedroom apartments inside, which we have done. It's been stabilized now for about two-plus years. And it's just been a home run, just a real blessing. And I hope it's an asset to the community. We think it is. You're now looking at the Old Chapel. This is the north side of the building. And this is the tennis court that I told you about, which came along with the building. We have always known that we would do something with that tennis court. We didn't want to go into it too fast. But now that the chapel is running nicely, that tennis court has always been an embarrassment to us. It's just basically a weed patch, and I don't like owning a weed patch. So we're to the point now where, we got started a while back to figure out, what should we put on this property? And again, I don't want to seem immodest here, but our mindset is if we're going to do something, we're going to do it right and do it with some class, something that we can be proud of, that'll be an asset to the community and that our tenants will be delighted to be associated with. And so what we've done is, we have planned for, you can see here is the chapel building. There it is in reality. And what I'm about to show you sits right immediately next to it. One of the challenges is architecturally, style-wise, what do you do when you've got such a gorgeous, old, 100-year-old building? What do you do style-wise? Well, we concluded early on, you don't try to replicate the old building because chances are you're not going to do a good job of it. It's, you just can't build a brand-new 100-year-old building. So then, how far away do you go? Do you go to chrome and glass? No, you don't do that. So the design is intended to be a real, strong nod to the old building as though it's its younger sibling or maybe its first cousin. And I think we've managed to pull that off. Let me get you a little bit oriented here. If you'll notice, if I can draw your attention to the screen, this face is, comes right up close to the sidewalk. This particular face is pushed back roughly, I don't know, it's 60, 70 feet, something like that. So if you look at the, at the top-down view, this picture I just showed you is looking at this side. And so this was the face of the building that you saw. This is the existing building. And the second face is all the way back here. So again, let me give you a shot at it. So what I'm saying is that this area is pushed back quite a ways. And what you have, I want to put in some really, really killer, nice landscaping in here. I'm not satisfied to put a little four-foot sidewalk that just walks from the front to the back. That doesn't cut it, as far as I'm concerned. So we'd like to design and install some beautiful landscaping so that this becomes almost like a little mini-city park. One of the concepts is to, let me go back a little bit, excuse me, going the wrong way. Right here, we would like to have an entryway that is essentially fenced off. You can see a little low, nice brick fence here. Entryway, which invites people back into this area. This would not be gated. It would not be, you know, a private, highly-secured thing. But hopefully, it would create a little bit of curiosity. When people walked past on this sidewalk, they'd look back in here and say, "Whoa, oh, man, that is nice. What's up with that?" And be welcome to walk back in there if they like. So that is this entryway. We agree with everything the staff has said with one exception. So now let's get into the rub, if I may. This is exactly what the code says. This is straight out of the code book. "A minimum of one pedestrian entrance to a commercial space, lobby, or residential unit shall be provided for every 50 feet of building frontage along primary streets and 100 feet on secondary streets." Well, we're on a secondary street, and we fit easily within the 100 feet. So essentially, this is saying that there needs to be one entry on the entry side of this building. Let me go back again. It's saying that along this side of the building, there needs to be one entry. Our original plan put an entry in this apartment, which, as you will see, this is a drawing that the staff did and sent back to me. So there it is. However, when we went to the design review committee, keep in mind, the design review committee consists of three practicing architects and one citizen-at-large, and she's a pretty bright individual. The design review committee took a look at this door that we had designed here, and they said, "No, no, 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 no. What are you doing? That is ugly." And this, I didn't even bring this up to the design review committee. This was their idea, although I love what they proposed. The design review committee said that they recommend approval of this project with the statement that the center entrance to the courtyard, meaning that archway, that brick archway, meets the intent of the code to provide one entrance to the structure. Then they went even further. They said, "In order for that to be further accentuated, to delete the entrance to the unit on the north elevation." In other words, the review committee said, "This really is the entryway that the code requires, and this little thing is a sore thumb. Get rid of that, Greg." Put the entry, you know, inside the courtyard. And I was singing to myself, "Hallelujah, you know, what a bright group of people." And so our objection, or not objection, our difference is that while staff feels like this door ought to be here, we don't, and we feel like the code is completely satisfied by that one entryway. So our position is that to best serve Provo's interests, we need to do three things. Number one, we need to comply with the code. And we think that both approaches do comply with the code. Number two, we think that this needs to have a very high aesthetic standard. And we believe that this grand entrance is more pleasing than having one little apartment door off to the side. And third, Provo talks a lot about a sense of community, and I agree with that. I think there's much to be said about generating a sense of community. And my belief is that a separate door on the north side erodes a sense of community. And let me show you why. What we would like is to consider this archway to be the entry. And we presently have it designed so that all of the entries to the apartments are inside this courtyard. Well, I don't think it encourages and enhances a sense of community to have the entries here and one entry over here. You know, this kind of becomes the ugly stepchild. And since this, we believe, satisfies the code, we would like very much for Provo's, well, Provo's design review committee, they're a group of highly capable architects. And I'd be very grateful if you would accept their recommendation, realizing that that best serves Provo's interests. There's my little pitch.
Anything else for us?
Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Jones?
If...
Yes. Well, go ahead, and then let me introduce an individual to you.
So if that entrance is put in, what would it be an entrance to? Would it be to the whole complex or just to that one apartment?
It would be this, this entrance, Mr. Jones, would basically bring you into this courtyard.
No, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant the other one.
Oh, this one, the little stepchild. It would be an entrance just to that particular apartment. Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Me too. And I respect the staff. They say, they see it differently. I know that. But I believe that this major entrance fully satisfies both the spirit and the, you know, the detail of the code.
And just to reiterate what you said and to clarify, all of the apartments would have entrances in this courtyard?
Yes. This would be where, where all, yes, all of them would be, would enter from there.
Okay.
May I introduce to you a gentleman named Scott Bingham? Scott is a local architect, lives here in Provo, just a block or two from this building. And Scott is part of the design review committee. And although Scott and I have a relationship, you need to know about this. Scott was involved in some of the preliminary design of this new building we're doing. And consequently, he appropriately, I think, recused himself from the vote during the design review committee. But Scott has some things that I think might be well for you to hear. Frontwards, backwards?
Could you get me to the floor plan?
To the floor, no, the floor plan's not there.
Can you have a floor plan on there that showed where the entry was? Maybe it was part of staff's.
I think Mr. Wright, did you have?
So one of the things that I was looking at when I first started looking at the design of this, when Greg and I were working together, is we wanted to create this central courtyard space that was just really interesting and clever. And we wanted to make it an amenity. And then, early on, it became apparent that, wow, if we put a really neat entry feature to that, if we go to the archway... This isn't a... Oh, now you're way back. You're way out in the weeds now.
May I have my presentation back?
The...
This one?
Yeah, if we zoom in on that entry feature there, the entry arch. This isn't a vinyl archway, you know, it's not a token wood trellis or anything like that. This is masonry, and we wanted to make it as grand as possible. And the reason why is because if Girl Scouts are coming to sell cookies, right? Or if you have someone who wants to come and visit, where will they go? Where, what's their visual cue as they're walking down the street? Where will they go to the entrance? And we hope that we point them to this. Whereas if you have just the door... Whereas if you have just the doorway leading to the one unit, we felt like that didn't, that didn't really meet the intent, right? And I, and when I say intent, I mean what I feel like the intent is of the code. Now, I understand the background of the code, why it's there. And the reason why I understand that is because in my neighborhood, there's a lot of apartment units that are, that have been, um, built where houses used to be. So there's a fabric of the neighborhood, right, where you have the residence front door, residence front door, all that facing the street. And then, an apartment unit will be built with the end looking towards the street, and that's kind of a cold shoulder. And so what we wanted to do was create something that was very interesting. You have windows facing the street, but then create the entryway to the, the, um, the complex within that courtyard. And then you enter the courtyard, and there, the main entrances unfold. Another reason why we felt like this was a good idea, um, when I say we, I mean Greg and I are in the early planning stages of this, was, uh, something that's called defensible space. We wanted to create something that was largely open to the public, right? Hence, the low fence and the plantings and so forth. You can look into this courtyard and see into it. But yet, the plantings, the fence, the, the, the entryway right there, the brick entry, arch entryway, all of that creates certain layers of defensible space. Now, there's, um, this entryway makes the person who's unwel, unwelcome or not wanted in there, there, there seems to be a physical barrier there. Well, there's not. There's no gates on that. There's nothing that would prevent that person from going in there. So this is one of those things that Provo City, in their Design Review Standards, is asking, is good design manifested in the, the applicant's, uh, design here? Is, are, is security addressed and so forth? So this does satisfy a lot of the, the Design Review requirements. So when we saw this as a Design Review Committee, we thought, well, that's a, that's a pretty clever, interesting way of defining that front entryway. It's not the proverbial door into the main complex, but we felt like it, it satisfied the demands of the code. One of the things also that I've seen a lot in a lot of the applicant, applications, I've been, I can't remember how long I've been on Design Review now, it seems like about ten years now. But, um, we've seen a lot of multifamily housing that comes in, whose end, whose shoulder is to the street. And then they will, to comply with the code, they will put the door into one unit, make something that looks like a grand opening, but it goes just to one unit. And I've always, that's always bothered me. And so I felt like this, this is a good solution to that problem. Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Maybe, um, and I think maybe for staff as well, just in terms of the intent of the requirement to have those doors. And a question about balconies as well, just other ways maybe to get more activity, eyes directly into the, you know, the public space in the street, and the, the potential for this approach to become the norm, and what effect that might have as opposed to having an actual door.
So would you go to the slide that has the actual language? So if you look at the actual language, there's nothing there that would suggest it was intended to be an outside area. Entrance to a commercial space lobby or residential unit. All of those things are into an interior of a building. Where this started was, that was a staircase. When the first plans came in, that door went to a staircase. And we said, no, that's not occupiable space. That doesn't count. It's got to be into a commercial space, a lobby, or a residential area. In my opinion, as you asked earlier about what code requirements are giving us problems or troublesome, to me, this is troublesome in that it doesn't require enough. It's because of this language that we got one door on Ninth East and Seventh North, on the east side of that building, on the Ninth East side of the building. We have a constant battle with developers who want to play, pay lip service to that one entrance, and so they do a really bad job of it. And that goes to the Design Review Committee. And the Design Review Committee says, my, that door is awfully ugly. Well, yes, we have had developers, I'm not saying this is one, but we've had developers who have intentionally made it a very ugly entrance to try to persuade us not to do something else. If the Planning Commission wants to interpret this another way, I think we should amend the code. Your recommendation should be to the City Council that we amend the code to allow the door to be opened wider, no pun intended, than what the face of the language is. Because of what we're trying to accomplish with activity to the street, eyes on the street, and those types of things, I think it would be a mistake to go away from this. But you're the Planning Commission, and the City Council will have the final word. Uh, well, I think as staff, we'd recommend a, a code amendment in any case. I don't think, uh, unless you're willing to get, make the decree that you're interpreting this on this project to, for this to mean what they would like it to mean.
Any thoughts on that, just kind of relative to the concept?
Well, I, I absolutely agree with Bill in what he's saying about how, that's got to be frustrating with the lip service, the door lip service, because that's what I'm seeing on Design Review Committee. I have to agree, I have to echo that. That's absolutely true. At the same time, I'd also like to see if there's any other creative solution to eyes on the street that it doesn't mean a door. And I think that this is one of them. And if I were to, if you were to ask me, oh, come up with a third one, I probably couldn't right now, but, because it's kind of difficult to, um, to, to write some of this stuff into code. And that's what I deal with all the time, or I should say often enough, is trying to interpret the code and trying to create an aesthetic that's appealing and marry the two. And sometimes, you get something that looks absolutely amazing that can't be built because of the, the code. And so I try to just throw it in a buxit, bucket, mix it around, and see what comes out, you know, uh, to use Greg's term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I, I think, if I understand it, it seems like we're, we're caught between the strict interpretation of the code and the aesthetics. I mean, I think they've made a compelling case for the, uh, the aesthetics of it all. And, you know, it kind of has that pocket neighborhood feel to it. I, I've lived in an apartment in a similar thing in Los Angeles, and it had a little cove like this. But one of the things they did have is they had a door on the street. And that was, um, when people would come to the apartment complex, they didn't know whether they went to that door or into the courtyard. I mean, they were, they were a little bit confused, and the person at the end of that apartment got a lot more knocks than they probably wanted. So, um, I see the dilemma, but, but I think aesthetically, I, I think it's quite beautiful.
Thank you. Anything else for the applicant or Mr. Bingham?
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question of, I, I don't know if it's of you or of staff to, to answer this question, but in the language here, when it says, um, so you're saying this is on the, this particular face of the building is on the secondary street, so it's a hundred feet? Is, um, is the face that's right on the street, rather than the, the, the kind of setback in the courtyard, is that section of it a hundred feet?
Uh, in other words, this, is this face?
Yeah, how, how, what's the width there?
Yes, and that's fifty feet. That's less than fifty feet.
So, I mean, that's another, that's another, uh, ki, instance, or, yeah, instance in which this particular design strikes me as not kind of lining up exactly with the language of the code. Can you go back to the language? Sorry. Again, I, maybe I'm, I'm, uh, not reading frontage in the right way, but, you know, building frontage along primary, or, yeah, building frontage along, uh, secondary streets. Well, what counts as frontage here? Is it, is it this kind of portion of the building that's just on the street? Or is it just the total width of the building, no matter what's kind of exactly on the, on the frontage? I mean, is, clearly, staff has interpreted frontage to mean the, the sum total of both, but is there, would you feel it would be a misreading to read only that section that's actually sits right there as, as frontage? And if, in, in which case, if it's less than a hundred, then that's not as, we wouldn't have to amend the code, or?
So... So, so are... Yeah, so I think to help clarify there, um, it's saying a minimum of one pedestrian entrance. So let's say this property were a lot wider or longer, um, had more frontage, it would have to have, you know, every hundred feet, you'd see a door.
Right.
In this case, since it's smaller, they have to at least provide one entrance. Uh, with the archway into that courtyard, we're not saying you can't have that, we're just saying also with, uh, uh, entry into that front unit that's fronting the street that, that meets this requirement. So I think you can look at it and say, the front door into the entrance helps satisfy this. The archway is something they can have in addition to. It's not, we're not saying you can't have the archway. But if this property were wider, and say it was, had two hundred feet of frontage, you'd see at least two doors as a minimum. They could provide more. Again, our codes provide minimums that...
Right, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, let's say you had, let's say you had a building on a secondary, whose, um, frontage was on a secondary street, that was less, let's say it was twenty-five feet, let's say it was fifteen feet. Would you still require a door on, on, on that? Or only if it was up to a hundred feet? Once, in other words, once it hit a hundred feet, is that when it requires a door? And then, and then every hundred feet thereafter requires a door per hundred foot? Or, do you know what I'm saying? Is there...
Yeah, so we would look at it and say, just like in a, you know, a single-family home, it has a front door that faces the street, that's a requirement we have in our code. So a, a door for any, you know, if it were twenty-five feet wide, we'd still require a door. If it were two hundred feet wide, uh, on a secondary street, we require at least two doors. So the intent of it is, on secondary streets, it's to provide more doors, to break up a block, uh, you know, just a wall that's not very inviting to a pedestrian that's walking down the street and just sees what could be a continuous wall. It's providing a break, uh, you know, and, and entryway, uh, you know, a different feature on the architecture to help, uh, tie the building into the pedestrian environment and create a, a more enjoyable, um, you know, pedestrian feel along the street. So...
Yeah.
I think that's the, the intent, uh, part of the intent of having that requirement is to help, uh, you know, break up a, a, a building wall.
Yeah.
Um, in this case, where it's a courtyard there, in this zone, um, you know, it's, it's one of those things where the, you know, the door helps, you know, provide, uh, you know, some cues to, to people, like you said, uh, you know, so someone can see that this is somewhere where I can enter and things like that. And then that's, that's one part of it. The other part is to help break up that, uh, that wall. And so I think that's part of the reason this was written the way it is, that it says, that it has frontage, meaning it's not facing the side street or, um, something like that, but that the entrance is facing the street to help with that, um, aesthetic feature.
So you, I mean, just to go back to, to the question, so you would say, no matter what it's, what it's kind of frontage footage was, say it was as, as little as twenty feet, it would, they would have to have a door there? And the spirit of, the spirit of the code is to, is to provide, um, just to break up the, the kind of dead space of a, of a wall?
Yeah, that's, I think that's...
Yeah. I mean, I, again, I like, I mean, I totally agree with the, with the spirit of, of that. I mean, I, in this particular instance, um, it does seem to me that that, that the design of it, the courtyard of it, I mean, does far more than a door would do. I mean, i- i- if, if I'm walking along that street, and I'm given this kind of low size of the wall, um, you know, if it were a big brick wall that had a, you know, a, a, a literal door in it, that, that would meet the spirit of the law, but would, would, it would seem to me that would, it would be much less effective in producing the, the effect that you're, that the, not you, but that the code is trying to elicit. I mean, this just seems, this, this seems to me like it does what the, yeah, what, what the code is trying to get to do far more effectively than a door in a mass of, of, of brick frontage would accomplish. I mean, I could go in there, I can wander around in there, it fun, it's funneling people in and out. I mean, it seems like it's getting people, getting eyes on the street more effectively. So I don't know how to solve the, I don't know how to solve the kind of discrepancy between what strikes me as a design feature that does a much better job of doing what this code, part of the code is trying to do than, than many instances, um, of, of architecture do, and then the, the kind of literal interpretation of the code. I mean, that's a real conundrum to me, um, that I'm, I'm not sure, uh, how, how we solve that. But I, I, I have, I have to agree with the, um, the proposal, or the developers here, that I, I think this cleverly addresses and gets us, you know, gets at the spirit of the law much better than most buildings that we've seen do. I mean, personally.
Mr. Rowan?
Yeah.
May I propose how to solve that dilemma? I assume that Provo City has committees such as this one, or more specifically, the Design Review Committee, in order to gather opinion, in, informed opinion. And I think the way to solve that dilemma is to go back and look at the Design Review Committee's experience with this. Number one, the qualifications of the committee. If, if you believe that a working credentialed architect counts for something, you've got three of them on that committee. These are all three bright people.
You don't, you don't.
I'm sorry?
That's not a correct statement.
Oh, okay. But in, in which case, I'll retract it. But let, let's assume that the Design Review Committee are capable individuals, and they looked at this, and they basically said, well, uh, we, we think that that archway door absolutely satisfies the spirit and the, and the letter of that law. So it seems to me like the way to solve that conundrum is to go back to what the Design Review Committee said and say, well, th- these are the people that are tasked with the process of looking at this and, and coming up with these kinds of interpretations.
Can I, can I make a couple of comments? Uh, maybe this is more properly brought up after this has gone out to the public and, and everything, and brought back for even a motion.
We need to progress there pretty quickly, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I would almost rather stop where we are right now, get it out to public, and then bring it back so we can make some more real headway on this.
Any commissioners have a concern with that? Just moving into, Commissioner Smith, thank you, I, I agree. Anything else for us before we... Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Neighborhood Chair? Have anybody representing the neighborhood?
[inaudible]
I don't see a neighborhood chair, so, well, if you have anything you'd like to add in that capacity?
Coincidentally, I'm the neighborhood vice-chair for the adjoining neighborhood. Um, and I think this whole thing started because Greg approached my wife, who is the neighborhood chair. And, um, she, uh, she volunteered me to help out. And so she was really concerned with one of the previous iterations, and that's how I became involved. But basically, this kind of sounds self-serving, but what we were looking for in the neighborhood is something that did not have the shoulder to the street kind of a thing. And we recognize this lot is long and deep, right? So we didn't want to see shoulder to the street, and we didn't want to see your average apartment building. I mean, if I were to say apartment building to you, you know, there's, there's an image that comes up in your head, and that's what we didn't want. We didn't want it to look and appear like an apartment building. We wanted it to look and appear like the Old Chapel does, where it's something that you're not quite sure what it is, you can kind of guess, but it, it's not your normal. And so, um, that's what we were trying to, um, fight against, I guess. And then also, we didn't want any parking in front of the, the, uh, building. And, uh, we felt like parking lots in front kind of don't add to the fabric of the, the neighborhood. They don't create an inviting space. And so this pro, this particular project solved both of those dilemmas that we have currently as a neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Again, thanks. Would anyone care to comment on the project? If so, please just state your name.
Hi, I'm Elise Faust. I'm a resident in the Old Chapel. And I just have three quick points. One is that I, as someone who, um, my window looks out on where this new building will be, I agree that having that in-between space with the landscaping and the archway is much more aesthetically pleasing. It's what I would prefer to look out, out my kitchen window. Second, uh, in terms of the community, the Old Chapel... Second, uh, in terms of the community, the Old Chapel has three separate doors. Um, and while we have little kind of pods of community within our doors, I think that the idea of having a communal outdoor space, um, would do a great deal to improve the sense of community in a building like this. Um, and third, and this obviously, I don't have qualifications, I'm just a law student, but, um, it seems to me that in the code, the word entrance and the word door are not synonyms. It's like a square rectangle thing. A door is an entrance, but there are also entrances that are not doors. So just thought I'd throw that out there in case you're figuring out how to couple the language, so.
Thank you.
You're going to rat away.
Anyone else?
I'm Rachel Benson. I am a Realtor and I'm a kind of small-time property investor, I guess you'd say. So I have a lot of, um, I've had a lot of different investment properties of my own over the years and I've known Greg from a distance and been familiar with his, um, projects. And so I just wanted to speak in support of this project. I think it's great. I think it's the highest and best use of that old tennis court. Um, he's obviously put a lot of thought into this, as he did into the Old Chapel. Great design. I'm sure it's cost a lot of money even to bring it, you know, to the point that he's at now. He has a great track record of building great properties that attract nice tenants. They're well-managed, which is more than I can say for a lot of our apartment buildings in this area. And, um, he's proven that his model works, that he can, you know, fill this niche in these high-end one-bedroom apartments. And I think that's something that not everyone can afford, but those that can are looking for something different and not just a standard apartment. So I'm really supportive of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, we will close the public hearing and turn the discussion to the Commission. Mr. Smith?
So a couple of questions. One is, what is the definition of a lobby? Can we define a lobby as a courtyard? And if so, then an entrance to the courtyard meets what that, what the law said. Throw that out there, but, um, I mean, we can, we can do some Google searches. I don't know, you probably already have. Uh, what, what does a lobby constitute? What, what constitute a lobby? What constitutes a lobby? Does a courtyard, um, act, act as a lobby, potentially? Uh, the other thing is, what are, are our, um, capabilities as far as you, you mentioned changing this? And, and I just want to make a statement to everybody that's out here that we're kind of bound by the law. And the law says that you have an entrance to a, a unit or a lobby or a, whatever it said. But, um, so, so what Bill said was correct. We need to figure out how to kind of swim upstream a little bit and maybe change what's, uh, what we're mandated to approve. And I think if you add the word courtyard to the, uh, what is it, fourteen thirty-four, two ninety-five? Then, and then, and that certainly is a courtyard, what, what's being proposed there. And then it all fits. And maybe that is, you know, changing, changing ordinance for, for one instance or one occasion. I don't know. Uh, I mean, that's probably not the best practice, but it works in this case. I think that the way it's designed without the door i- is the most effective. Uh, it's the best look. It, it makes the most sense to me. Uh, I think that you could take, as, uh, Mr. Rowan mentioned, a- and cut that in half and you've only got fifty feet really, because the setback is so far of the, the additional, um, you know, fifty feet, that does that really count as, um, street front or frontage? Um, you know, legally, frontage, yes, but, but street, you know, adjacent to the street, it's certainly not. So, I mean, just, but my question for staff then is, are we able to, in this setting, recommend that, uh, a- along with the motion to, to, uh, to approve, um, and all the stipulations, recommend that the, the ordinance be changed? I don't know.
Sure. It's within your purview to recommend that lot, that courtyard be added to the definition.
And then in that, in, in your estimation, that satisfies the, the rule, the rule, the ordinance, correct?
Yes, if courtyard was added, that would satisfy it, yes.
I mean, that's the simplest way to go about it, I think.
He made the same comment I was going to.
Okay.
Can we go back to the language of the ordinance?
While we're doing that, can I, can I ask a question? I mean, I, I, I may just be misreading body language fr- from the two of you. I mean, you seem to feel really strongly about having the door there. And I really value your, your opinion and your, your kind of experience. Just help me understand or help us understand a little bit more about why you feel so strongly about the door. Like, what, what would the door accomplish there? Besides, like, let's just let go of the, of the language of the ordinance just for, for a second. What, what does the, the door, having the door there accomplish in terms of usage and the, the, the experience of people walking by on the sidewalk? I mean, does it, do you feel like it, it does fundamentally make an enormous or a, a significant difference that's worth hanging on to that I'm just overlooking in my kind of lack of experience? Or just help me understand where your strong feelings are coming from?
I believe it does for this reason. We have projects that you're about to see, that you're going to see in the coming months, that staff has taken a very hard line on this code requirement. And the buildings you're going to see have got several or many doors to walk-up units along their frontage. And it's a very appealing aesthetic. It's very active to the street. I'm afraid if you make this change, that we're going to get a completely redesigned project that has got an archway to a courtyard. Are we going to lose what we've been able to accomplish on some projects that are on the drawing board but haven't come to you yet?
And maybe to follow up, uh, and I appreciate staff. I mean, I'm not necessarily falling on a sword on this, but I think you're practically doing, you know, the best that you can to, to make your opinion very clear. The concept of having that connection to the street, um, from my perspective, that's, that's the only way we're going to get to a point to where projects relate better to, to what's adjacent to them on neighboring properties and adjacent to the, the public space, you know, this, the street, um, than what we had with what was described earlier, you know, the apartment buildings that were built in the fifty, sixties and seventies, where it's an internal fortress and there's no orientation to the rest of the community. And that's, that's my concern with a modification that would, would get us going in that direction. I appreciate, I think, what you said, Mr. Pepperoni, earlier, which is that as I read this, where it's, it's one door for every fifty feet, when I'm guessing that typically your unit width is closer to twenty than fifty, if anything, I would suggest fifty's way, way too liberal to really achieve the kind of, again, connection that I think makes the most sense.
Yeah, it's that kind of standard that got us the ninth and seventh building. There's one door on the seventh north side, there's one door on the ninth east side.
Yeah.
I wonder also if, uh, there are other ways to make that connection. I think we've talked about, maybe it's other means I've been just to value perhaps of, of like a balcony space and that sort of a thing, um, on to frontage to a public street. And that, that maybe is being one way to, to enhance that connection. I'm going to go and say my last thought so I can, I can shut up. But, uh, relative to this project here, I think from a design perspective, compared to what potentially it could look like and how it sort of fits well with things, I think it's really easy to rally behind and say, that's great. I can only read the code language, code language one way though, which I think is, is pretty limiting. And I agree with staff and really the only concern that I have with changing it. And, Mr. Pepperoni, you described it perfectly, is what does that do maybe elsewhere? And, again, maybe to finish the thought, I don't see the two being mutually exclusive at all. The idea of having a courtyard created there with the archway and the wall and the door. So that's, that's maybe something I'm a little bit hung up on as well. I think the two could coexist, coexist pretty well. That's it for me.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, let's go ahead and hear from Commissioner Ronan and then we'll perhaps take.
I was just going to report that Google says a synonym for lobby is entrance.
Okay, thank you.
So just to, to kind of follow up on that conversation. So to get back to this particular, I mean, if, if we, um, if we, and you don't have to answer this if you feel like it puts you in a position where you don't want to be in. I mean, but if we're not concerned about future, um, projects, if we're just looking at this project on its own merits, um, and, and not worrying about what changing the code might do, and we can deal with that potentially later. I mean, do you feel like there's, there's still a strong argument for the door and the, and the courtyard? Or do you, do you not feel as compelled if, if you're not concerned about kind of fu- future projects? I mean, a- again, going back to my earlier comment, it just feels to me that, that in the end, um, the, that particular entrance way achieves so many of the, the things, because, because everyone's kind of exiting out. You get just the same number of eyes on the street with that entrance way, because there's no other way to exit. I mean, because all the, all the doors are coming out of there, so you still have eyes on the street in that way. But again, I may be overlooking some, some compelling argument about, because in principle, I'm, I'm right with you. I think we're all on the same page in principle, so.
So that is the elevation that staff suggested, which isn't what Design Review saw. They saw the previous version to that. Um, I think that accomplishes what we're trying to accomplish. If there's an, if there's also a doorway to an arched area out here, um, that's fine. That three-foot wall, then arch, there's going to be a three-foot wall along here and then that arch is in the middle of it. You're going to be able to see all these doors down the side of this building. It's going to be pretty obvious that there's lots of doors to lots of units. So I'm not that concerned about people thinking this is the entrance to the entire building. Um, no, I don't think just a window accomplishes the same thing here as a door does. And no, I don't think the door here to an archway accomplishes what that does.
Say, say that last part again. Oh, I missed where you're pointing.
I don't believe a door to an archway here accomplishes what a door to a unit does there.
Tell me more about why.
Because they don't function the same. This is a, if you wanted to.
Can I interject? I mean, from my perspective, if something's happening on the street that maybe does warrant some attention, having a door to a unit there and that kind of direct connectivity is different than just having the arch and maybe doors around the corner.
I see, yeah, in terms of.
The courtyard's not occupiable space.
Right.
That unit is.
What's the distance, what's the setback or the distance between the sidewalk and, and that elevation that we're talking about there with the door? Twelve feet, fifteen feet? Can you remember? So that.
It can't be more than ten feet, right?
Yeah, the maximum setback is ten feet.
Looks like it's eight?
I think it's about eight feet.
Eight.
Can I add something? Um, can we look at the ordinance language again? And maybe this isn't up for interpretation, but I feel like a lot of this discussion does hinge on the interpretation of this ordinance. And where it says a unit shall be provided for every fifty feet, is that, it's not fifty feet, right? That, that.
One wing?
That most outward frontage. It doesn't, it's not a fifty-feet span.
I don't believe, I don't, I believe it's less than fifty, yeah.
And so is our ordinance, ordinance explicit enough in saying that when there is fifty feet, there must be a door per fifty feet? Because right now, I think we honestly could interpret it that where it doesn't meet fifty feet, it doesn't mandate a door. Is that totally inaccurate?
So I think the ordinance is reading that a minimum of one pedestrian entrance shall be every fifty feet for, uh, primary streets or a hundred feet for secondary streets, which this one is. So it's just saying a minimum should be pr- provided every fifty feet. And the intent of that is, um, like I mentioned earlier, if, if, if the width of the building and not the, you know, the courtyard isn't part of the building, it says, um, building frontage, would be, you know, an entrance provided every fifty feet. So if it were a lot, lot, a lot wider, you'd have a lot more entrances than you do. But just as far as our, uh, other standards in our code go, it's an entrance provided to a structure is, um, I mean, that's what we have in our design standards elsewhere in the code. Uh, we could review those to, I think what you're saying is, since this is under fifty or under a hundred, that it doesn't need an entrance at all. I think we have other places in our code that say an entrance is required. This code is just saying an entrance, um, you know, should be provided more frequently too. I think it's kind of what that number there is for.
Okay, so the idea that maybe the same issue's addressed elsewhere in the code, that might disrupt what I'm going to say. But, uh, I'm hearing you say that no less than one door to a unit for frontage has to be provided and one for every additional fifty feet. And a particular kind of street needs to be provided. I can easily see how that would be interpreted differently. I think the language could be made a little bit more clear here and maybe we could do that elsewhere in the code. And maybe at the same time, we could revisit that fifty and one hundred foot of those two requirements. I'd be totally in favor of tightening that up. I wonder if that would maybe get us off-center tonight if we took just a different perspective relative to how that reads with the idea that maybe one's not really required because there's not fifty feet of frontage, building frontage. And perhaps, you know, as soon as we can get things noticed to, in my view, it'd be strengthening the language of this provision. We could hear that and get that moved on. Hopefully, the City Council would agree and tackle it that way. So I guess that's my thought.
And I would just add that we have a very conscientious developer with, which is a, a pleasure in Provo and we're grateful for that. Um, and I think we all, we all find the spirit of the law desirable. But we also understand that we do have to stick with this, as much detail is, is provided in the ordinance, right? As an administrative item, we have to check the boxes and it's not, it's not up for any other kind of discussion. Um, so it's just how are we checking this box as a, yeah, it's how do we interpret this ordinance? Will determine how we check the box, is that right?
And the Design Review Committee is a recommending body to you. They're, they're a branch of you, not the other way around. So you can do whatever you'd like.
Can I ask one more follow-up? Or I'm not going to promise that this is my last follow-up question. But I'd like to ask another, you, you mentioned just something really briefly in, in passing, um, Bill, about the Design Review Committee didn't see the version of the, of your kind of proposal that you, your kind of most recent iteration of that. Tell, tell me more about what they did see and.
Dustin wants your question he's going to put up.
So we'll try to pull up a slide that shows what the Design Review Committee saw. Let's see. Okay. So on the.
They thought, they saw that one on the left, that first one?
Yeah, on the left is what was shown to the Design Review Committee. So again, it just shows just a little door there that didn't have much of a porch or any elements like that that would help, uh, show that it, uh, how it addresses the street and things like that. So the image on the right was, was staff going back and, and making a few modifications uh, to help, um, show kind of what Design Review Committee was, uh, talking about. You know, some other elements there, but, and then adding the door and making it more of a feature, because the discussion turned towards, um, this archway and didn't really address what staff wanted to, was to help the Design Review to provide staff with more, um, feedback on how this front door could, could look better instead of just being a door stuck on the wall, but to actually have a porch and, and things like that. So since that discussion didn't really take place, staff went back and, um, made this, uh, rendering here to kind of help show that it could look good. And not just be a door stuck on a wall.
Right. So I mean, I, I mean, I must say that I, again, I'm, I'm, I am, uh, having heard from staff. I mean, I am persuaded about the value of, of having, you know, something right there on the street, you know, the. you know, for public safety concerns. And hearing what the Design Review Committee was responding to is different than, you know, this proposal from the staff does give me reason to, you know, pause or reconsider kind of the kind of strong response that we have been presented by the applicant with from the Design Review Committee.
It looks to me like the dilemma or the conundrum that we have is whether we do something that makes sense and is recommended by the Design Review Committee versus meeting the letter of the law. If you could quickly go to the ordinance again, I see two loopholes in that. I write contracts all the time for construction, and as I interpret that, if I got in a conflict with a contractor over a specification that was written this way, I would have to agree that the way that's written, a door is not required unless there's 50 feet. And there isn't 50 feet. There's less than 50 feet. So no door is required, just as you pointed out. And second, lobby, the word lobby, I think meets the intent of the statement, I'm sorry, courtyard meets the intent of using the word lobby. A lobby doesn't have to have a roof, in my understanding. So there's, I think we can, we can go along with what the Design Review Committee recommends and what the developer wants to do and still meet the letter of that law. I would recommend, though, that the lobby rewritten by a better lawyer.
Come back subsequently and amend that.
I think it needs to be clarified because right now, there's, I see two loopholes there that ought to be closed up. And also, I'd further recommend that when we take a vote, that we split the vote on whether to allow this and then on the project as a whole. I would like to see separate votes about...
Explain how that would...
Well, we have one, we've got one item on the agenda, and I think we will act on that item. And then if we want to discuss maybe additional action to take or...
Well, I think the motion should be made on the proposal as it's written, and then an amendment, and we would vote on that amendment.
Now, is that becoming a motion? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I don't think, I don't think we're ready for a motion yet. I'm not suggesting that, but when it does come to that point, I would ask that we have two separate votes because there's really two issues there.
I think we do need to talk about the issues separately.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would be inclined to go down that path if it doesn't create a huge kerfuffle with the ordinance. Is that a doable thing in a reasonable amount of time to get the proper language and tighten up on this if we were to move ahead with the stipulation that items one, two, and four of the recommendations were carried out?
Yes.
Say that again.
I would be so inclined to make that motion.
Okay. So the item that we'll act on is the proposed project plan. So we would start with that. And first of all, anything else that we want to discuss before maybe we really start to push for a motion?
Yeah, I do have a couple, just a couple more questions. Let's say that door was to a lobby. So the door that you're proposing is to a lobby instead of to a residential entrance. Does it accomplish the same thing in terms of eyes on the street that you're, in terms of the logic of the response of why you feel like a door is so much different? A door into a lobby that's not occupied strikes me as a very different proposition than a door into an apartment that is occupied, where people have, let's say, a table, their dining table right by that window or something like that, right? I mean, that's, that strikes me as a very, two very different kinds, achieving two very different kinds of things. So you don't have to answer that, but again, that does strike me as, again, something that makes this, the way that this is written, I'm not sure if it addresses the kind of rationale that you're offering me, which I find very persuasive, but that wouldn't necessarily do that here. And then I guess my second question is a procedural one, which is, at this stage in the game, I mean, is it viable to put this on hold while we tighten up the, while we tighten up the language, or does this have to be subject to the language that's here right now? That we couldn't, we couldn't go back and say, wait a minute, we want to go back and change the language so that it's more, more...
I think it's fine for the planning commission to interpret the code as Ed's recommended. And by interpreting that way, you could approve this project and then make the recommendation that staff go back and tighten this language so that we don't continue to disagree with developers over what this section means.
But what are the implications of that for future projects? And if we, if we say, you know, in interpreting that, this code in a certain way, are we then setting the precedent for future projects until we change the language to have to interpret that in the same way?
We'd have the same leeway, I guess.
It would seem, I mean, that seems to me like we would get ourselves and potentially get ourselves in legal trouble if we interpret it one way on one project and then a different way on a...
Once you interpret it this way, a new way tonight, that will apply to everyone until the staff amends the code.
Right.
The trigger for staff amending the code is staff getting language for an amendment onto an agenda, onto a published agenda. Then it becomes pending legislation. But anybody who submits an application between tonight and the publication of that agenda, which creates pending legislation, anyone who submits an application, they get to have it interpreted the same way.
Now, I guess I would hope, and I think we're maybe really splitting hairs in terms of the prospect of a project sliding in and the concept of pending legislation and that sort of a thing. I'd certainly argue that if the planning commission tonight directs staff to initiate an amendment to the code to clarify some of the restrictions or regulations that we're talking about in this section of the code, that that is when it becomes pending legislation. And you could, again, argue that either way, but I think that window of time, one way or another, I mean, I'd assume you could have it on an agenda AM, excuse me, tomorrow. So...
The agenda has to be published. Have we published the agenda for the next meeting this month?
No, that will be, it'll be titled like tomorrow.
That's...
So...
No vacation tomorrow.
Literally, no.
And also, if an ordinance amendment does get put on an agenda, it's still subject to council approval, so...
Absolutely, yeah.
The council could see it differently and deny it, but then the planning commission's interpretation was such. So that's something to consider as well.
Commissioner Ellsworth has...
Yeah. If we did interpret the code as that door being necessary here, the door and the archway are not mutually exclusive, right? And this would be a phenomenal project with both of them, or with one or with the other, honestly. And I think if we did approve it tonight and we did require a door, if we interpreted it that way, then, and then later we did change this, this code to stipulate something else as though the door weren't necessary, could the applicant reapply after, like in a month or two when that was approved, that new language was approved, could they reapply? And let's assume that they get approvals tonight and then with the city council, but then it was changed a month from now, could they reapply and say, okay, no door now?
Could they reapply to take the door out?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we would make them get through the process of reapplying. We can all understand what the planning commission, I think I'm understanding what the planning commission's intent is. And if that did happen, we would allow them to modify the building plans to take it out.
Because, okay. So I think there's a couple of options for success here.
I'm not making a motion. I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to sacrifice future projects that ignore the street for the sake of, again, I think this, as everyone, I think, agrees, is a great project, but I just don't feel confident moving forward without full confidence that, or I don't feel confident moving forward with the fear of future projects interpreting this language in a way that we might have to interpret it to make this project work. And I, so I'm not prepared to make an exception for this one project at this point in time. I mean, I want to have a lot more confidence that the code will get us exactly what we want on every project and find a way to make this code work. And I, again, my, I'm not dismayed by any means, but the fact that the Design Review Committee didn't see the staff's other additional or more refined version does qualify for me, the kind of strength of the presentation that we heard from the applicant. So I wouldn't be prepared to make an excuse or wouldn't be prepared to make an exception for this project to the way that staff is interpreting the code right now.
I would just ask the question, are the, is there 50 feet of building frontage on this property? And I think the answer is no. It's less than 50. Okay, so if there isn't 50 feet of building frontage, then a pedestrian entrance is not required.
That's one way of reading, that's one way of interpreting this, but that's not the staff's way of interpreting this.
That's the right way to interpret it. Just kidding.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we continue this to a future date to obtain additional information or to further consider the information as presented. And that we recommend that staff take a second look at 1434-295, adjust it, tighten it up, whatever we want to call it, and that we come back again. What is it, on February 28th? If we're able to get it.
I don't believe we need to renotice or anything, right? So 28th should be fine.
Will that unnecessarily delay the project for the applicant?
Well, it's two weeks, so, I mean, I think that's, that's part of what should weigh into our decision. But Commissioner Smith, thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
I have a question.
Okay, let's...
If there's not a second, then there's no motion. So I'd hold your question until there's a second.
We have a motion and a second. That was Commissioner Jones. So a discussion on the motion, Commissioner Ellsworth?
Yeah, my question is, which I just forgot, so never mind.
We can come back. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not, we've, I feel like in the past, we've, I don't want to say bowed to pressure from the applicant, saying two weeks will, you know, cause us irreparable economic damage. And, you know, the mix is still where it's at, and I'm not, I feel no compulsion to bow to that, that kind of pressure, that it has to be done tonight. I want to get it right. And the city, it feels to me like there are other projects in the city that, you know, are hinging upon what we do right now. And so...
Mr. Jones?
I would say, I would echo what Mr. Rowan has said. If two-week delay avoids a future lawsuit, then I think the two-weeks delay is well worth it. I'm sorry, and I apologize to the developer, but if it avoids a lawsuit or difficulty down the path when they, when there's, when the building is being constructed, I think the two-week delay is worth it.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
Yeah, I just remembered my question. Is there any precedent for how we've interpreted this ordinance in the past that we should be following tonight?
I think Mr. Wright has represented how staff has interpreted this requirement over many projects.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Just from my own understanding relative to the mechanics of how we're anticipating that this is going to play out in a couple of weeks, we have the motion that we'll, we'll take a vote on here in a second. Should we continue this? The idea is then that staff does initiate an ordinance amendment. That's in play then. This is an application that was made, therefore we act on that. We've had a public hearing. Therefore, that requirement's satisfied so that when this is on the agenda then on the 28th, potentially, that discussion's pretty light to a person. I've heard really strong willingness to approve the project. We just want to make sure that things are happening in the proper order, to make sure that our bases are covered, maybe looking at things a little bigger picture. And I think we'd have every anticipation of approving this on the 28th. I'm not looking for, you know, solid for sure, but that's how I'm reading things. And that being said, any other discussion lastly before?
A quick parenthetical to my motion. It's not, the motion is not to continue so we can figure out whether there's a door or not a door. It's so we can go back and kind of, I'm going to make up a word, disambiguate or whatever we want to call it, this whole section here, tighten it up, make it so it's, there's less questions or less open for random interpretation. And then we come back and we follow the law and we go forward with that. So that's the intent of my motion, to continue.
Anything else?
Well, I was just going to say we could approve it as presented, and then if the language comes out, the staff can just move ahead with the project. I actually like your way of accomplishing it, then we don't have to hear it again, and he can get rolling.
That's what I was going to say, is why, why couldn't we approve it as is tonight? And then if this language were to change...
And then we can work on that amendment and get it taken care of, and then he's not going to have that door built for a couple of months.
Just from my perspective, I think that's a viable option as well.
Okay.
I do like the idea. I had not thought about continuing this.
Sure.
So that we can get the ordinance language in order or at least get that process initiated. I think that is probably, personally, I think that's the most prudent way for us to act relative to trying to look out for all of the issues and maybe things that might be a concern to staff and to the city in terms of accomplishing the things that this language really is trying to accomplish. So, you know, maybe it's more of a fail-safe kind of an approach to continue it tonight. I'll vote here in a second, but that's, that's where I'm at. In two weeks, again, I would hope that the applicant understanding the discussion that we're having now wouldn't be delayed at all.
So procedurally, I guess what we have to do is we have to vote down the motion that's on the floor and then create a new motion to approve the project.
Correct.
That's what I would like to do.
Well, any other discussion?
It hinges on your vote, no.
All in favor of the motion that's before us?
To continue.
To continue. Do we want to do roll call on this?
Let's do a raise of hands, shall we?
Okay, well, let's just go down the line. Commissioner Rowan?
To continue it?
To continue.
Vote on the motion to continue. So it's an I or an A. I is to continue the item to the 28th.
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Nay.
Aye?
Nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, so that's a 3-3. I believe the motion fails then. So does somebody want to make another motion?
I'll make another motion, that we approve the proposed project plan and authorize the joint parking agreement, but with the following conditions. One, that the CRC final approval is received. Two, the joint parking agreement is recorded with the county. Three, that the downtown development design standards are met, including a pedestrian entrance into the residential unit facing 400 North. And as we discussed, that would follow precedent. And then four, the city council approval of ordinance amendment 16-00230A.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion?
I didn't quite understand the motion. Is the motion with the door into the...
Yeah, just as it's stated.
Stated. Yes, with the door.
Yes.
Yes, with the door as stated.
All of these, all of these four included in the motion, which includes the door.
Any other questions on the motion or discussion?
Well, I think there ought to be a little bit of discussion, otherwise it's going to be a 3-3 again. So, I mean, we're basically just kind of talked for an hour and ended up... So, I mean, we're basically just kind of talked for an hour and, and ended up.
It's a hard one.
Doing exactly what's here, and there's zero impetus to go back. I mean, there is impetus because of the discussion, but there's nothing, you know, hanging. Staff could go back and say, "Well, we dodged that bullet," not saying you would, but, yeah.
Well, I think we can add to this motion informally the hope that we do change the ordinance, to clarify it.
We can have a second conversation about that particular thing after the vote.
Would staff recommend a particular way to, I mean, I think in good faith, you're going to do what we've, respond to what we're doing, but is there anything we need to do formally to make sure that we address this, that this particular ordinance as soon as possible?
I think we come to that after we act on this item.
Or we can, we can add as a recommendation to the motion.
We can add that recommendation either way.
We certainly could. We've got this motion with a second on the floor. If we want to amend that, we can, or we can act on that and then talk about the other part. That's kind of my preference. I don't know how the votes will shake out, maybe that. Maybe we'll be right back to square one.
So, I'm sorry.
Please.
If a majority of the planning commission is comfortable with one door into the courtyard, then staff is agreeable to you interpreting this according to Mr. Jones and directing staff to amend the ordinance, which we'll get on to the next planning commission agenda, an ordinance amendment. If majority of the council would like two doors, planning commission would like two doors, then you can ask us to go ahead and strengthen this language, but the two doors is our current interpretation, and a future amendment will only strengthen that interpretation. Okay?
So if we, sorry, I'm maybe a little bit slow here, but, so, from my perspective, if we want to approve the project in its current form, that is.
With one door.
Thank you. As proposed by the applicant, I should say.
Okay.
Including.
That needs to be stated, stated in the motion then.
And even to be clear, as proposed by the applicant means just the courtyard entrance and not a door into that unit that's closest to 4th North. Then our best two courses of action are to approve it that way tonight, or to continue it for the next meeting with the idea that we'll approve it that way then. One of those two. The motion that's on the floor, as I understand it, is to require that the door be provided to the unit along with the entrance to the courtyard.
With two doors, two entrances.
Got it. Okay.
Courtyard and the, and the one on the street.
Yeah, no, I specified in my motion was a pedestrian entrance into the residential unit facing 400 North. So the other was not clarified.
Okay, thank you. That helps me.
But, I mean, that could, I guess that could still be.
I would like to make a friendly to the motion, that there be a recommendation that the staff go back and look at 1434-295, tighten it up, and whatever needs to be done there for future, whatever.
I concur with that.
And for my sake, just to clarify that, literally, initiate a change, prepare draft language, get it on the agenda ASAP. Yeah, let's.
Does that require a substitute motion here?
No, it's just amend your motion.
Comfortable with your motion, comfortable with?
Just amend your motion as.
Okay, so I need to make an amendment to the previous motion that stipulates that the Community Development Department will review 1434-295 in order to clarify the intent, and, is that right? Am I saying this right?
That's how I'm.
Okay, in order to clarify intent. Yeah, and we, that would just be included in this motion, I suppose.
And the, but the motion that, that you proposed still requires two doors.
Right.
Yes, that is the motion. Now, are you comfortable with that change?
Yes, I am, second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second.
Are we all really clear on this? Because I think I lost something.
It says the staff prepared it, and then they'll go ahead and.
Because it doesn't say anything about two doors in here.
Well.
Yeah, that's the whole problem we're having with this language.
Yeah, so the staff was saying the one door to the unit. If they'd like to have another door to the courtyard, that's fine, and that's up to them, and, but, they can do that.
But the way, with this motion, the project would be approved with the arch into the courtyard and the pedestrian door, man door into the unit.
Okay.
And if the ordinance got changed in the interim, then they can reinterpret later.
Okay, so, to clarify my own motion or create a substitute motion, I would propose that we approve the proposed project plan with the following conditions. One, the CRC final approval is received. Two, joint parking agreement recorded with the county. Three, downtown development design standards are met, including a pedestrian entrance into the residential unit facing 400 North. And the proposed archway. Four, the City Council approval of ordinance amendment 16-00230A. And that the staff will present us with future alternatives to 1434-295.
Second.
Do we get that?
I think I understand.
Any last questions on that? Okay.
One more statement. Sorry, I want to make sure we get this right.
Yes, get it right.
This now has not, is not about the door. It's about the interpretation of this as it is. So what we're saying is, we are, we are, we are approving this with staff recommendation, that there is a door to a unit, regardless of whether there's a courtyard or any other entrance. And that staff go back and re-look at this and bring something forward again with the change.
That is clarifying. Thank you.
Yeah.
I understand that that's true, except that as well, we are literally approving the plan with the entrance to the courtyard as designed also. So it's not like, that goes away if, if they choose, and that is part of the approval, so.
Excuse me, which unit door, which version of the unit door is being approved?
Any unit door within 50 feet. Doesn't matter.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I just say that a courtyard is an acceptable option.
Yeah, it's, it says lobby.
We've kind of been through that. I mean, I think that's been the crux of why this has taken as long as it has, and.
It's been confusing.
We've, I think, deliberated enough on that. In staff's view, is there any need to provide more clarity relative to the design? We have the image with the two different elevations, kind of the original and the new. Can we look at those for just a second? The door is one change. There are some others as well between those two. Different things like, Mr. Wright, you described the change that's here, different changes to some of the dormers and that sort of thing. So should we anticipate that with the motion that's on the floor now, that staff would require that to be matched with what gets built?
Yeah, so staff sent this to the applicant to show them the pedestrian, or the entrance to the unit that they showed lacking a porch and those elements here. Part of the adjustment was, you know, a few other, you know, bringing this section out so that it creates a, kind of a cove here for that porch to be more functional. In the Designer View Committee, they made some recommendations that there's more of a space. So here, between the window and the, the roof, that there's extra space. So some of the windows were redesigned to also meet the things that were discussed in the Designer View Committee. So as part of staff going through and doing that, we, we made those changes that we felt would meet the other things that were discussed besides just this door and the archway in the Designer View Committee.
But that's not, those recommendations aren't binding, are they? I mean, the, say, say that we pass this tonight, as is under your, under the interpretation of the code that you've offered tonight. They could still do the first version if they so chose.
So they would, they would need to come back with revised plans showing that they meet the Designer View Committee recommendations. If they're not in favor with what staff's proposing, come back with something else. If staff had any concern with that, we could take it back to the Designer View Committee to see if what they're proposing meets what was desired at that time.
So this is where, I guess I get, I confuse again, which is that if the Designer View Committee didn't see that second drawing, and, and, and the kind of input that the Designer View Committee gave was to get rid of the, that door altogether and have, and they read the code in a very different way than you did, does it make sense to give the Designer View Committee a chance to see, you know, the, the second version and respond to that? And if they come back and say, "Okay, yeah, that makes a lot more sense." You know, we're, as qualified, again, part of the tension here is, is the strong, the strong opinion that the Designer View Committee had about the unnecessary, the unnecessary of that door, that, that, that door in the first version was aesthetically unpleasing, and, and that, in fact, this archway quasi-door met this, kind of the, the spirit, or perhaps they, they would go so far as to say it meets the letter of the law, of the, of the, the language. In which case, you know, if we wanted the Designer View Committee to look at this again so that, so that what's in here, and your kind of proposal is binding, does it make sense to give them the chance to do so?
Yeah, so as Bill mentioned earlier, the Designer View Committee is recommending body to the Planning Commission. As, so you can take their recommendations. They, when they make the recommendations, they don't stipulate that it would have to come back to them. They leave, they give feedback to staff to, to then make sure that those things are met. And if we have concerns for like, or if there's a disagreement with the applicant, then we would take it back to Designer View. So what's before you today, you could make that decision. It doesn't have to go back to Designer View unless you wanted it to, because they make a.
It would certainly appear that there's a strong disagreement between the applicant and, and staff. I, I don't know if it's a disagreement that's strong enough to warrant. Again, I feel like there's been some mis, not intentional misdirection, but just, we're, we're kind of, the, the, the strength of the, of the applicant's presentation rested upon the Designer View Committee's opinion about the first drawing and not the second drawing. And, and now we're, and then there's other disagreements as well in terms of how you interpret that, that code. But it just seems to me that if we want to, if we want to be thorough about this, then we give the, the Designer View Committee a chance to respond to the, to the drawings, but.
If I could, I can clarify that. The Designer View Committee had no concerns about the actual design of the door or the overhangs or anything. Their concern was about that that door, regardless of its configuration, is, is, takes emphasis away from the main entry to the project. So it was, all goes back to the idea of streetscape. So none of those issues were even discussed.
What would matter? So you're a member of the Designer View Committee?
I am. I'm the architect on the project, and I was there.
You were there when that?
And Scott was on the committee, and so it was, it was purely a matter of just a distracting additional door.
Okay.
Purely.
I might have a question. Not make this go on any longer, but just in sort of, from a procedural standpoint, I really kind of wince at the idea that the Planning Commission acts on something, and then it might need, there might still be some room for argument or debate between staff and an applicant, or some need to go back to the Designer View Committee. That seems almost like punishment for both staff and an applicant, you know, to continue to have that spin cycle in play. And I'm seeing here other things than just the door. So Mr. Schultz, things like, you know, this change here and the change to the dormers and that sort of a thing. Are those?
Somebody's practicing architecture without a license, but none of those things were seen by Designer View Committee. This was the elevation they saw and approved.
So my question then, more specifically, is, would you anticipate modifying the plans to match this?
No.
No.
No, this was the design the owner liked. It was designed, Designer View Committee reviewed and said, "This is fantastic. Only recommendation we make is, don't put the additional door in."
Okay.
That's the recommendation.
Well, and that's the recommendation from the Designer View Committee. We get recommendations from a few different entities. Staff is certainly one. And I'm just trying to.
Sure. One, one other thing that I guess I'm a little bit concerned about is when Mr. Pepperoni said, given an opportunity to tighten the code down, he, he, I hope that doesn't mean that we will tighten it down so that our situation will not be allowed.
To clarify it so that it's.
Will not be allowed. We'll make sure it's not allowed, and I, I think that.
I'd heard it differently.
Yeah, I think he means clarify. I don't think.
Okay.
I'd heard to cover other projects that are maybe.
Oh, okay, and I totally get that, and I think that's fair enough. But I don't want to get into a situation where we get the new ordinance and find out that what we did is create a new ordinance that is so tight that we don't have any argument because our situation is not allowed. And so as long as that's understood in the motion and everything, I think that's fair enough.
So by way of clarification, just on the motion, I kind of am distilling all of the discussion. I mean, basically, we're just talking about this with all of the elements associated to this and not the one to our right at all, right, if we're looking that way. Still have a motion on the floor. Do we have anything else that?
Yeah, no.
I mean, I just think that in, in the end, I don't, I don't mind the, the proposal that the applicant presented, but I'm not willing to change the code and open, open the city to developments that ignore the street in a way, and I'm just not, I'm not willing to do that. And, you know, even if the Designer View Committee feels that, and even if as a body we feel that this project would, you know, be just fine without, without the door. You know, I don't want to interpret the code in such a way that would lead to future developments in the downtown area that would, that would not produce something that was okay like this. And if that means that the applicant doesn't get, you know, their kind of ultimate wish on this, I'm sorry. I mean, our, our job is for the, the health of the city, and if we open ourselves to projects in the future, I just, yeah, I'm, I'm not willing to do that.
So let me just be clear, that Mr. Schultz's fear is correct, that if staff goes back and tweaks the ordinance, it's going to be to tighten it, not loosen it. Right. Okay.
But it's my understanding that you're looking to do that in such a fashion that it's not going to impact what we act on tonight.
Correct.
And it would be equitable. I mean, what we're doing here tonight, approving it this way, is, is equitable because it's what we've done in the past.
And I think that, I mean, it should be done in a way that the door is not taken into account whatsoever in this project. It's, and I, and I think you'll do that. And then however the language comes out, that's what we follow, and that's what we continue to follow, so.
But it, I mean, is it fair to say you're not going to, you're, you're most likely not going to go back and add to the language of the code, or an entrance to a courtyard is satisfying? I mean, that's not, that's not something you're going to, so voting, voting here is, is, on the current motion is essentially voting that this project will have that door. And, you know, if the, if the, if the applicant wants to build the first version, then ultimately what we're saying is we're okay with that. We're okay with a potentially a less aesthetically pleasing version of this building than the one that the, that staff has presented, or one that could be developed. And that's the applicant's ultimate decision to, to make. But we're, we're, in the end, we're saying we don't want to sacrifice future streets, residential, commercial, street building interactions for the sake of, of this one building. That's what, that's what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the motion on the table.
Right.
So, again, if the Planning Commission is satisfied having the archway and not the door, then the staff is comfortable with you interpreting the code as Mr. Jones suggested and directing staff to amend the code, interpreting it the way he suggested for tonight, for this project, and directing us to amend it so it's tightened in the future. Is that, is that clear? Am I making sense?
There's two ways.
But that's not the motion that's on.
That's not the motion.
Not the motion that's on the floor.
That's right.
It's not the motion that's on the floor.
I'm pretty much good with either way.
And just to call for a vote on the motion. And to help us be as clear as we can this time, we'll start other end. Commissioner Smith?
It'll work out.
Yeah, I still, I still would like to take the time necessary. However, to me, it's not about a door. It's about the, the law. And I'll vote yea on the motion.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Jones?
Nay.
Aye.
Mr. Ronan. So by five to one vote, the project's approved, as we see there on audiences left.
And as part of the motion, staff will initiate a change to the code. This may, we might talk about that in a couple of weeks.
And hopefully-
And-
It resolves itself.
Move on.
Yeah. That's why I say it anyway.
Thanks for your time, that was good. And moving on, item number three.
Happy Valentine's Day.
I didn't think there was any way that clock would actually be right. We were still here tonight, but I'm wondering maybe-
Happy Valentine's Day, y'all.
Okay.
The sacrifices we make as citizen planners.
That was very, very healthy, I think. Item number three, proposed code amendment to section fourteen nineteen twenty to allow dental laboratories as a permitted use in the SC two zone. Staff, do you want to?
Okay, thank you. So the applicant is requesting on this item to amend an ordinance for the SC two zone in our standard land use codes. And so those standard land use codes, basically for each zone, they outline what uses are allowed within that zone. There's permitted uses and there's conditional uses. The applicant is requesting to add a use that doesn't, that isn't in there right now, which is sixty-five fifteen, which is for dental labs. It is also for drug rehabilitation. But the applicant's request is for dental lab only, so with that text in there that's dental lab only, the drug rehabilitation wouldn't be an issue by adding this as a permitted use in that zone. You know, and so staff finds that the proposed amendment to add dental labs to this zone wouldn't have a greater impact than the other permitted uses in the zone already. And it allows greater flexibility for permitted land uses within that zone. And so staff would recommend that the planning commission afford a positive recommendation onto the municipal council to approve the proposed ordinance amendment as outlined in attachment one in your staff report.
Mr. Wright, thank you. Any questions for staff?
What exactly is a dental lab?
That's a good question.
So a dental lab is different than a dental office. A dental lab would be where dentures and other orthodontic things are, are made, and so it's not having clients come and pick things up or get dental work done, it's just-
They get the impressions of your teeth and do things.
Correct.
With those impressions.
And so it's, it's something that's done all within a facility and, and then shipped out, back out to the dental offices to give to their clients.
Is it really low skill manufacturing? Or, what, I mean, what's a comparable use?
So the type of use, it's, I mean, it could go into a manufacturing zone as well. I believe they're probably, that's where they're currently permitted as well. So adding it to this zone just creates another use that would still fit in with other uses within that zone and, and not necessarily have any major impacts with that.
No obnoxious sounds, odors, not a ton of need for parking or anything?
Just the, just the high whir of the dental drill, no.
Okay, anything else for staff? Applicant, Mr. Evans? Anybody? Anybody here representing the applicant? Any neighborhood chairs? Does anybody at all want to speak to this proposal? Public hearing's open, open, closed. Okay, great.
I'll make a motion. I, I move to recommend approval to municipal council on the proposed ordinance of the code amendment to fourteen nineteen oh two, zero two zero, to allow dental laboratories as permitted use to the community commercial SC two zones.
We have a motion-
I'll second.
And a second, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? I think it was unanimous. Moving on to item number four. PEG Development requests project plan approval for a two hundred and eighteen year apartment complex located at forty-eight hundred north, University Avenue in the high density residential zone, and approval for eight single family lots located on forty-seven fifty north and the R one ten zone. Mr. Maxfield?
I think several of you will recall about a year ago, we started hearing the idea of apartment building in the River Bottoms area. It was reviewed, sent on to the council actually without a motion because you tied on your, your motion. Came back, I think you tied again, went back, and there were revisions made each time. And then finally you gave it a unanimous approval, or recommendation for approval in May. Municipal council then approved the text amendment to the pro twenty-two zone, which really in essence is a zone change, it upped the density in that area. There is one slight error in your heading for the item, it says a density of up to thirty-eight units, and it's actually only twenty-nine, so if you notice that, I think in the text we tried to clarify that a little bit, but principally, I'll go through these slides and show the plan for the project. The plan divided into three buildings, and I've got a comparative photo. This is the site plan for the existing one. This one's a comparative photo that shows more what the original development looked like, where you had the buildings a little bit hard to see, but in a different configuration, kind of clustered up, they're a little bit different scale, but than the current plan, which has the three buildings. Now, the footprint's bigger on some of these because the height was knocked down on the project. It was a four-story complex, it was knocked down to three stories, and then the emphasis on the height was changed, where you had a higher end toward University Avenue, that was switched back to the west on the site. The tables that you had in your staff report show the parking requirement, the parking supplied for the site. And again, this gives you an idea of the unit arrangements through each of the buildings. And then the images, the elevations. And I admit these are a little confusing because you're getting four sides for each building, so you really have to put yourself in the right spot, but if you look at the north elevations, you'll see doors facing out onto the street for each of the buildings, should mention that.
Phew!
Get that one out of the way.
For the east.
And and then just highlighting a couple of things, the pool area and the open space around that area is the amenity, main amenity. There is fencing on the side by the pool and some of the others that gives a detail on the fence there. Way back when, when the pro twenty-two zone was first approved, there's quite a discussion on the fence and making sure it wasn't chain link, but you know, something that was attractive and fit in with the nature of it. Staff believes this type of fencing fits in very well with the type of architecture on the units. The one outstanding item really was the signage. In the pro twenty-two zone, it gives minimum signage or, or maximum signage, I guess in that sense. And the heights fairly well corresponding to the sign ordinance. However, there's also a caveat within the pro twenty-two zone that gives the planning commission the ability to approve something different. I think, you know, the main concern would obviously be this wouldn't block the clear vision zones of the entrances. But maybe just leave it up to the applicant to talk about the signage a little bit in their presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for staff?
We got a question.
Sorry, thank you.
There's just a minor discrepancy that has no consequence, but the orientation of the pool does not agree with the with, with the two layouts, well, one's at a diagonal and one's-
Their image that is a little different.
The colored illustration shows a diagonal on that one, is that, is it the same?
Yeah, I'd hate to, hate for that to become a lawsuit.
Yeah, that's right, and then this was the, the site plan showing it differently, right? Maybe we have the applicant address app, they're still looking at the diagonal, but we'd assumed it was the colored illustration.
So just to, just to clarify this, when we, I, I thought I would never hear this or have to deal with this project again after last year. So this, but last year, I, I guess I was forgetting that we didn't kind of officially make a project plan approval, it was just a preliminary, there were preliminary plans included as they kept coming back to us with different configurations of the buildings as they were responding to our input and the neighborhood's input, and now this is the, this is the final project.
That's correct, I apologize for not clarifying that, but we treat those going forward now as concept plans because they're really not in a preliminary stage because of how much that was going back and forth. We never had time to examine it and look at it in that sort of a situation. You know, it didn't violate the main concerns we'd had, but the particulars weren't tied down as much until council approved it with the development agreement. And, and that's why we wanted to bring it back, because we're not sure you had really seen the final renditions.
Got it. I mean, I don't know if, oh, this is not, not so much a question as much as just like a, it brings back that sickening feeling to me of I just liked the first plan a whole, a whole lot more, you know, that, where, where the mass was on University Avenue, and I'm, you know, I still occasionally reconstruct in my brain how we got to this place. And, you know, how, how did that happen, you know, in the process of responding to the neighborhood, I mean, as, as we responded to the neighbors, we ended up with what I feel is, is, you know, an inferior design with, with, when you don't have, you know, the height right there on the, on the street, and so again, this just brings back those, I wouldn't go so far as to say nightmares, but just like, how, you know, how did this happen? How, how do we get to the, this place where we agreed on a, a project that-
In particular, it was the height on the corner, right?
Right.
Right, the big bulk right there.
Right, which is something, something the neighborhood was very opposed to because they didn't want to give the impression that this was, you know, they, they were worried about the impression of, of the a kind of real high density place right next to residential, and so they wanted, and in the end, I just-
And knocking that fourth floor off changed some things too, I think, from their massing. And I think that was a lot of the, the compromise later on was the massing of the project.
And this is, I recognize this is a really cruel thing to say about, you know, a project plan that's taken hours and hours, you know, to, to get to this place as they've responded to, you know, the neighborhood and what was approved in the end. But I just felt compelled to say how, how tragic I still feel like this all is.
Anything else for staff?
On that note.
Anybody here from PEG, applicant to speak to the project?
Brandon Rinless-Bacher, PEG Development. Did you have questions right off the bat, or do you want me to kind of talk about a few things?
Anything you'd want to share first, let's start with that.
I too have nightmares still from last year. But to clarify, the last year's approval and recommendation, I guess, was really for a text amendment to the, you know, to the code itself, it wasn't about the, the project plan at all, it was just about the, the code.
Text amendment and zoning, prozone, didn't we do that then? Was those?
No, the prozone already existed.
Yeah, it was just amendment, an amendment to the prozone. And now this fits that amendment and the zone. And, you know, this is what the people wanted, so this is what we have. But we, we too liked the, the original design, but this, this has really fit well with the, its surroundings, and we like this project the way it is now. Now that it, it's fitting in that, that zone, so. There were a couple of questions brought up, the pool. The pool was oriented, you know, it was parallel to that, that road, forty-eight hundred north, until we got landscape, landscape architect involved, and he's just kind of tweaked it and, and taken the design and made it cool and-
I like it, I'll, I'll say that, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's why the pool is that way, the, the other drawing we had in there, I think, was a civil drawing. And the civil engineer just showed a box for the, the pool, it wasn't anything to do with design. And then the fence itself around the pool, I think, is shown as a mesh fence. And we're still looking at the, the fence that will kind of surround the project. But we're looking at maybe a colored vinyl or some iron and possibly some concrete, we just we're looking at costs on that, so.
And this one, I believe you had plantings around it too, so it was a question of whether it became a green fence, you know, over time with the plants growing up and toward the fence or something like that.
I did have a question, and it concerned the fencing or the separation between the parking lot and the housing that'll go back there.
Yeah.
And you said you're still working on that, looking at it, but what are you, what are you really looking toward, and I would hope it wouldn't be a vinyl fence. Can't stand vinyl fences, but what are your thoughts there?
On, on what type of fence we'll go with?
Size, height, yeah, what type of fence, things like that.
There's a requirement for the pool as far as height, but I-
Well, just between the parking lot and the houses.
Yeah, I don't think there's really a requirement as far as height goes on, on that. I don't think in the code there's a requirement on material, except for maybe the chain link material, we, we, we're going to shy away from that for sure. Over here on this, on this east side, where it's next to the, the trail, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, I can't comment, I guess, and give you a straight answer on what material we're going to use there. I think it should be the same material all the way through. Maybe that's not the right way to go, maybe the iron, you know, iron can be over there on the, next to the trail so that people can see through. And then the rest is vinyl. I'm not sure, it's, it's going to come down to cost for that on us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't care so much about vinyl, separating the parking lot and that back to the houses as much as on the street front. I, I would hope that that wouldn't be.
Well, and that's our thought too, we, we do want to look at something nicer that, that runs up the trail, and it's not going to run all the way up to the corner. It's just going to run up and then kind of tie it back into our building on the, kind of the north leg of that building.
You're just talking about this here?
No, sorry, over on the east side here. So it'll run, it'll run up that property line and then it'll tie back into the north leg of that building up there. I think, I don't know if the landscape plan would show it here or not, I think we do have some-
They did have more detail on, on some of this, but we, on the trail area, apologies because we didn't include that. We thought is, is fairly sufficient on that edge.
I guess you can kind of see, I think maybe that's the representation of the fence there, there's a little gate and it'll run down this way, tie back into the other fence that'll run to the west, but there's a gate there for maintenance purposes. And I guess even if, you know, tenants wanted to walk out onto the trail, but it'll be a an accessible gate with a card. Card access only.
Would the city let somebody construct a walkway out to tie into the trail through there? Make that connection?
Certainly hope so.
I would too.
Well, especially on, on lower part two that would go out somewhere in here so that everyone in the other buildings could get out there.
How about open versus solid fencing along?
We would want something open, we want something that's got vision to it. Do you put doors into it?
Yeah, that's why I think the mesh, you know, that was kind of there, whatever, is fairly acceptable because it lets a lot of visibility, but-
See the fence, right?
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you explain to me the method, or like, why we have this courtyard around parking or this courtyard of parking? Like, why it was all built around that, I think it's kind of a unique design, I just wondered what the intent was so that everyone can look out their window.
Talking about this?
Yeah.
Well, to meet the requirement, we needed as much parking as we could, and as you probably are aware, underground parking is expensive, so we do have a lot of that under these buildings, but this was a good spot to hide the parking from the road, and- and also to give access to tenants into the buildings quickly. There's elevators, you know, right off some of these entrances and they can just get quickly into the building. It, it was a good use for that space.
Okay, thanks. I have less history with this project. And then this is just an aside, but on the north side, is it, is this oriented to the north?
Yeah, north is up here.
So the north side, that sidewalk is curvilinear and zigzaggy, which is terrible for people with strollers or who get, who walk. Let's make sure we don't do that on your side.
Oh, over here?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, okay. Yeah, we're just showing this straight walkway down here.
Yeah, morally opposed, morally opposed to curvy sidewalks. So if we can address that in the future and. And it's miserable to run on that, so.
I probably didn't mention that, but there is a, a level of parking under these buildings, you know, that doesn't show up. I apologize.
There's some parking under this building here and then there's parking under here. Yep.
And I would just say to follow up on your question, Shannon, that I would way, I would way rather have tenants looking at parking lots than the public. I mean, you know, so I, I don't mind at all that, I think it's a clever design to get the parking and, and not put it on the, on the street where the public has nothing to look at but parking lots. So I, you know, yeah, by all means, if they want the cars, then let them look at them and not, not us.
Anything else for the applicant? It's not tax credit project, just market rate strictly?
Yep, market rate.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody from the River Bottoms neighborhood, River Bottoms neighborhood chair? Okay, no chair, then anybody?
Yeah, true.
My name is Jim O'Rand. I live on 4750 North. The rural River Bottom, soon to be relocated to the newly formed high-density River Bottom area. The only high-density residential part of the River Bottom, by the way. My question is, I know a considerable amount of effort was put into a master plan. And it varies from zone to zone throughout the city. And when we built in the River Bottoms, there's apartments, there's duplexes, there's triplexes, there's single-family homes, we all built under the guidelines of the master plan. All of us. Then PEG comes along and they submit a development. Has nothing to do with the master plan, does not in any way conform to the master plan. I know, we're kicking the dead horse now. Nevertheless, the master plan, gone. Well, there were some other problems, height, density, gone. Those problems are solved. Just take it to city council, solved, you know? They've got their density, they've got their height, they've got their, whatever they asked for, they got. Now we're concerned, they want signage, and we don't know what they're talking about in signage. I mean, is it going to be something that's going to light up our whole neighborhood? I know the city spent a great deal of time in forming their sign code. Well, it's not a surprise to anybody that now this sign code does not fit PEG's interest in what they wanted as a sign, my understanding. So until we know what we've got for a sign, we'd like very much that some stipulations be made as to what the signage can be so that our whole neighborhood not, doesn't become part of a playground or whatever. The interest that we have also is in the fence that separates the single-family lots on the south of their project and on the north of our project. From day one, they promised us it would be a wall. And every time I remind them of this promise, they go deaf. I mean, for, for right now, there is no stipulation, no agreement as to what that wall is going to be. It could be old water heaters stacked side by side. I know that's absurd, but what is it going to be? We would like to be as much autonomous in our area, which is a single-family, most of us one-acre lots. And we really are not thrilled with the hat, the possibility of having 218 units that will overshadow us. Okay.
George Tucker, 51 West, 4750 North. My good neighbor, two doors down, his biggest concern has been that fence from day one. And he's the oldest one on the street. And I'm afraid if we get a vinyl fence in there, it may push him over the edge. We may not have him any longer. Anything you can do to help us in that area, I would appreciate it. And he will appreciate it much more than I appreciate your efforts if you could tighten that up. Fascinating that this project, that fence may, the cost of that fence, how did he word it? Can't, anybody help me out here? The, the cost of the fence, the amount of money they have would determine the fence. I mean, is this project here, you should be able to have any fence you want with that project.
Ask the question, just show us if you have a fence.
Absolutely. Correct. Yeah, right where you painted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the fence that'll be between the apartments and the lots that they'll be developing is, right?
Is the fence we're talking about.
Which I, I think I understand the concern. I'd understand it more clearly if, for example, you might live in a home that, that today backed onto and it was going to be the fence on your property line, but.
You have a very good point. Whatever they put in there, these guys may put up their own. Just that much taller so they don't have to look at it.
Okay.
Very good point. And I thought about that, but you know, I know that my neighbor, next time I see him, he will ask me about that fence.
Well.
Because that's what he does every time I see him. And so since I was here, I thought, well, maybe if you guys could tighten it up. Then when I see him, I will let him know about that fence.
For folks that live on the south side of 4750 North, they're probably not going to see much of that fence, right? It's back behind the homes that'll be built. So if we have a concern, maybe it's more just for the, the future residents of those lots.
And there yet.
And that aren't even there yet, exactly.
You, you are a hundred percent right, but I know when I see Bob Anderson, he's going to ask me about that fence.
Okay.
Because that's what he does.
Well, if you need.
I was sent down here by my wife or I would be home. And so that's why I'm here. Because I, all of this, you guys can take care of it. It's not, we're done, we're over, we're past. The nightmare's over. Live on 4750 North, irrelevant. Thank you, guys.
My guess is they'll build a fence that will allow, that will make people want to buy the homes that, about the fence, so.
Anybody else? Okay, great. We closed the public hearing then.
We can, well, I mean, if the applicants wanted to respond to any of the concerns about that, we've done that in the past. I don't know if there's a need to.
I don't know if you'd like me to pass on the, on this signage real quickly if I could do that.
Oh, yeah, if you want to talk about the signage.
Yeah, these are monument signs. They're on the ground and they show them these little chevron angles, I believe. Is that right? These three areas is where they'd be, but they're on the ground. They're not.
There's no signage on the, on the north or east, east side at all?
There may be some signage on some of the entrances to the building that just indicate what building it is, the address, might say, you know, the name of the project. But those chevrons are really the only thing. We don't have, you know, hundred-foot signs.
Nothing in neon?
No, there's no.
LEDs.
No crazy, there's, there's going to be some landscaping spotlights that just light the, the signs up just so people can see it at night. But we're not, you know, putting up big lights to, to distract anybody or cause accidents or anything like that. So just small, simple landscaping lights. I think our landscape designer just, you know, has a few of them per sign and that's it.
I was hoping for something along the lines of that big sign at the intersection of State and University and Orem, that enormous TV.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought certainly that's what you're going to put on the front of your building.
Yeah, we, we can probably do that still.
But to be clear, we're just talking about five feet tall, a little bit taller than five feet.
Five foot four.
Nothing more than that. Maybe I pictured like some letters on the building. Yeah, so for the, the signs that'll be out next to 4000 North, five feet tall. And the only other thing might be the name of the project on the building or something like that. Nothing else.
Yep.
And there's, I mean, we heard an item, I don't know if it was a year ago, a little over a year ago, about signage on that corridor where someone, it was the medical kind of industry that wanted something bigger and grander and, and we said no. You know, we, we held up the, the ordinance that regulated signage along that, along University Ave.
Are there any other issues you want me to?
Did, did you want to say anything about the fence at all or do you, have you gotten to that part of the design yet?
The, well, that's what we're looking at right now.
Because I don't want this guy to die.
Yeah, me too. So the, the side, or the, the fence on the east side, it really, we've been thinking that it does need to engage with that trail. So I'm guessing it will be an iron fence or this mesh fence or an aluminum fence or something like that. The, the fence at the back of the lots, I'm guessing it's going to be vinyl. And that's just going to separate the, you know, the lots from the, the parking. And everybody that buys those lots and builds in here, they're just, they're not going to know any different when they get there. And they'll probably put up their own fences.
Vinyl though, terrible.
Limited lifespan, so it's, PEG anticipates owning the project, right?
What's that, sorry?
PEG anticipates owning the project.
Yep.
Managing the property and periodically replacing the vinyl. Hey.
Don't do vinyl. Do something, yeah, do something good.
Even some kind of tilt up. Yeah, that, hey, you won't touch it.
We've got three options coming that we're going to look at, the pricing and someone else above me can make that decision.
Well, tell them, don't do vinyl. Tell, tell them that a guy's life is riding on the, on this decision.
Okay. Is there anything else for me? Okay.
Thank you.
With a guy's life involved, can I just take twenty seconds?
Please, yeah.
The access gate, could we keep it to the north? If we get it down to the south, it gets, becomes easier to park on 4750 and walk along the trail and through that gate, they will do that. If it's easier for them. If it's harder, they won't. So please keep that in mind as you approve this project.
There's probably a clarification we need because I'm guessing that they're thinking there's a wall along the street where reality is these units, these are lots that front along the street.
I'm walking out on to University Ave.
Yeah, I think what he's looking at is if you put a, put an access to the path up here and then put one down here, then you have people parking, I don't know, the people can't even park on University.
Thinking people might park here.
Yeah, so people might park here to walk around and come in this entrance.
If it's easier to do, they will do it.
Yeah.
I don't know. I can't, I can't see that happening, given the amount of parking that's under that building and on the surface by that building, but you know, that's my. Okay.
Again, thank you. Anything else to discuss? I have a staff question for you guys. Vinyl fencing or a wall, what, what kind of latitude do we have in terms of what we require?
There's nothing in the zone that, that's specific as to what that's going to be. My, my guess is that if that's a, if PEG installs vinyl there, those are going to be, my guess is very expensive homes and those homeowners will put up their own wall that will match their house when they build their house. I don't think the vinyl fence is going to stay there once people build their houses.
So if it doesn't get installed initially, maybe as a masonry wall or something like that?
Well, I think it will get installed initially, but I think as they build their homes, they'll replace it.
Even if it's a masonry wall, you think they'd replace it?
I don't, well, I don't think PEG's going to do a masonry wall.
Put it, put it up next to it.
There's nothing in the zone that would require that.
Double wall.
There's nothing in the zone that would require that. That's really the, okay. Is that worth looking at? I'm used to masonry walls being required between commercial and residential or multifamily and single-family and some of those kinds of things where.
Yeah, it could have been written into the zone, you know, because when the zone was being revised.
Has that been talked about before?
I think a lot of the other topics dealt with streets and, and the massing and, and really didn't get into.
Yeah, we didn't really talk about that in this particular project, but we've, I'm making a point to talk about vinyl fencing and my hatred of it whenever I can.
And sometimes the tilt up concrete, I think, is about as bad, you know, in terms of just a real faux. It's, but certainly it lasts, you know, I mean, I think in terms of concept of good fences helping to make good neighbors.
But I think you're right, but it's liable back close to those parking spaces.
It's going to get beat to death, yeah. And as it gets replaced, if it's the homeowners that replace it, then you've got eight different kinds of fencing along there and some of that. I suspect those aren't compelling arguments, you know, when you're looking at a balance sheet. But maybe a note for us, next time we're looking at a zone change or something like that. Like that does make a big difference when you don't have trailer hitches backing into it or anything like that, so.
I should mention, we've had to represent him from our engineering department here all night. Would, he'd probably feel better if you asked him at least one question.
You hashed a lot of this out, that's why.
Yeah, I don't know what more we can do. That's, I guess, partly.
Please.
My question for engineering is can all the, can the lift stations handle all this new development here? Joking.
I've got a question I'm hesitant almost to bring up, but sewer and the homes, the existing homes, how does that get handled? Sewer line gets installed in 4750. I know there's some requirements that come into play then about people connecting into sewer when it's available. I know sometimes that's really expensive. What's the scoop on that?
So I, I think you're probably aware, it sounds like you're aware that PEG Development's designed the sewer to run down University Parkway to connect to an existing gravity sewer so that we can get a gravity sewer on 4750 south. Or north, I mean, sorry, north, which we're really excited about because we have a water well right here and another water well right over here and all these homes are on septic right now. And so there are potential pollution to our water well. You probably heard that as well. So we're making sure that this sewer in 4750 is being constructed deep enough that these homes can connect to it. And we do plan on when this sewer is constructed, having laterals stubbed out to the properties so that it'll be easy for the property owners to connect to that. And that'll probably mean that the city's having to participate in the cost of that, those laterals. Because it has nothing really to do with PEG Development. But we're willing to do that just to make it easier. One, to make the development proceed forward and get a road done. We don't have to dig it up again. And two, make it easier for the homeowners there to connect. It will take a, a bigger effort on our part from the city's public work standpoint because we need to go out and now coordinate with each of those property owners and make sure, find out how deep their sewer is, where it's coming out of their home and what it's going to take to connect to the sewer. So that's homework for us in the coming few weeks before they get started.
So the city's participation is in the lateral? So the city's participation is in the lateral?
Yes, we haven't really defined exactly what our participation totally will be, but I anticipate that we'll at least participate to that point.
Okay, and then, like, impact fees for the homes? They pay a sewer impact fee, and they'd be responsible for taking it from the, the, wherever, I guess, is it the right-of-way, is that where it'd be?
Yes.
On, okay.
Yeah, they would have to connect to, from the right-of-way back to wherever they're, where they can intercept their lateral. The impact fee is twelve-hundred-and-thirty dollars, they do have three years to connect for city ordinance.
Okay, that was.
So, should give them enough time to make arrangements.
Have you had much feedback from any of them?
I haven't heard from anybody yet on the south side of forty-seven fifty myself. No, I haven't, so before you go, if you wanna give me your name and number, that'll save me some, some time and effort.
We probably, I shouldn't be having this kind of discussion away from microphones.
It sounds to me, just relative to concerns about getting utilities to the south side of forty-seven hundred north, forty-seven fifty north, engineering department, well. And it sounds like, I mean, just for the sake of maybe anybody that, for whatever reason, might be trying to figure out what we're talking about. The engineering department's gonna work with the homeowners there, and it sounds like there's gonna be some time to make any changes that need to be made. Glad to hear the impact fees are like twelve-hundred dollars. So, anyway, that was, that was my question, I appreciate the way that it's being handled.
We'll, we'll do everything we can to work with the property owners, and yes, I still have, need to reach out to them and enter into those discussions.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Ronan.
I propose that we approve the proposed project plan for residential development that includes apartment units and a single-family lots at combined density of up to twenty-nine units per acre, located between forty-seven fifty nor, forty-seven fifty and forty-eight hundred north and between approximately two forty-five west and University Avenue in the Pro R twenty-two zone. And that approval is subject to, one, a separate staff review and approval for building signage, which meets the requirements of the Pro twenty-two zone, and final approval of the city's coordinator, of the city's coordinators review committee upon meeting all ordinance requirements. And including my motion, staff report.
You have a motion, that's second. Mr. Smith, is that right, or is that, okay, great.
Sorry, just a clarification, making sure then that their proposed signage does not meet Pro twenty-two, so. If, if you like that signage, you would have to specify that you would go with the signage as shown in the, the plan. Otherwise, we'd have to cut back that signage to meet the ordinance.
I guess I missed that part, I didn't, I didn't recognize there was.
How much would it have to be cut back?
I didn't understand that it was.
Yeah, they can have like thirty-one square feet, which, if you look at the dimensions, five by whatever, they're probably up into the fifty or sixty or somewhere in there. And, and that's one side, yeah, if you double it, because of the chevrons and that, it's quite a bit more.
For a project of this, just overall mass.
The scale, it may fit, yeah.
That doesn't seem to be, to be out of place. So Commissioner Ronan, I don't know if you'd wanna maybe add anything relative to signage to your motion or not?
I'm happy to have a conversation about it, I mean, again, I just didn't obviously pay close enough attention to the discrepancy between the Pro twenty-two zone and the, the size of the signage there. Any, any thoughts? I just wanna go home mostly, I mean.
The, the buildings are forty feet tall, is that right, approximately? Thirty-eight, so in my view, a five-foot-four tall sign landscaped around it, uplit. It understood, next to what's gonna be there, is it not gonna be?
Yeah, well, I liked what I saw, I just didn't.
A detraction or a negative, in my view. I'm more, honestly, I'd, I'd be more concerned about wall signage and having, you know, the name of the project and ten-foot-tall channel letters or something like that, but the monument signs.
But apparently, this, this does not meet the code, so we need to, we need to write in an exception to that or something.
Yeah, there's a caveat in there, it says, says they have to follow that unless approved by the planning commission, basically, approved differently. So.
Okay, then.
Call out numbers, or you could refer to the illustration.
Wait, so you're saying that we can, we can approve, we can, we can go against code on some things, but not on other things?
Some places the code give you some wiggle room, other places they don't.
Oh, what have we done?
It's a function of the pro, right? Is that it? So, which is different from other zoning.
I like the sign, it was, as it was too, as it was presented, I didn't realize that it was the difference between what was, what the code stated, and so I would.
I may have brushed through to not have apologized.
I, I would offer a friendly amendment that we accept the, the signage as presented, even though it differs from the current ordinance.
Commissioner Ronan, are you comfortable with adding something?
Yeah, I am.
I, I would object to that because the, what's presented here is ambiguous, there's no length.
There is, there's dimensions right here.
I don't see. Yeah, there's a height, but not the length. Oh, in terms of length.
Okay, let's say with a length maybe not to exceed, what would that be?
Can the architect just give us, give us that dimension? I, I'm not opposed at all to what I see here, but I, I, I think we need to be precise.
Can you go to landscaping plan, I'm hoping that we can piece it together with that.
So that's depth of parking stalls roughly twenty feet. But each one of those wings is probably eighteen feet itself, so. Three different signs with two sides apiece, each about eighteen feet long. So if we said, no greater than eighteen feet per side, thirty-six feet, then-ish, I'm guessing. That's, it's, it's long.
That's enormous. If you scale, if you use the five-point-four dimension and scale off the length, even though it is on an angle, yeah, fifteen, eighteen feet is, it sounds about right.
Yeah, eighteen feet, so nine feet each kinda chevron, is about what we're thinking.
Yeah, each, each side of the chevron would be.
He was thinking eighteen each chevron.
Thirty-six.
Oh, thirty-six for, for the total.
Yeah.
Do you think it's that big?
But if you can go nine and nine, that's better.
It's not a lot smaller than that, if it's, if it is smaller, it's not much.
It's probably not much smaller, you're probably right.
I mean, if you take the five-four, turn it on its side, these are only ten feet as they are.
Just, just to avoid disputes in the future, I think the motion should, should put some numbers in there.
So, not, I'm just suggesting not to exceed.
I mean, you can either, you can either say it in square. Well, you're asking me to do your dirty feet.
Withdraw and restate. You guys just tell us what you want and we'll make it happen.
Whatever I say would be a totally arbitrary number, sure, not to exceed eighteen feet.
Per side.
Per side.
Perfect.
Be great if it were less.
We'll do our best.
Still second.
Thank you. I think it is great to be as clear as we can, by the way, thank you for that. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's again unanimous, thank you. Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight?
Thank you, staff. Thank you, colleagues.
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, PEG Development.
One thing I wanna talk about really quickly, and this is not intended, honestly, to be any kind of a criticism. But the discussion that we had about which elevation are we making a motion on some of the different design elements and things like that. I know things work their way through the process in lots of different ways, lots of different forms, and that sort of a thing. It's gonna sound maybe like a little bit power-hungry, maybe, that's not it, but just to be as definitive as we can be when we're taking action on something, even if it's just to make a recommendation. I think that should be it, you know, relative to the design so that nobody, you know, staff doesn't need to go back and try to pull teeth or negotiate or anything, and it's just done with, with what we see here. I don't necessarily wanna slow down projects so that everything gets buttoned up super tight before it gets here, but I think we at least need to be able to articulate clearly what we're acting on with the understanding that after that, if the city council wants to change something that works its way to them, so be it. But it's as clear as we can be here.
What?
I'll, I wish to withdraw my motion to adjourn and just ask staff, since you're going to tighten up or clarify that ordinance, would you like to know our feelings as to what we would like to see the?
Email it to me tomorrow, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Great idea.
No motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.